I want to ask you if you would for a few minutes to indulge me and allow me a few minutes of your time and attention before we actually start tonight's council meeting. I hope each one of you noticed the thirteen chairs covered by the flag of the United States of America in the front row of our chamber this evening. I invite you to join me in a silent tribute for twenty-one seconds to honor the thirteen fallen warriors from events in recent weeks. These eleven Marines, one Army and one Navy Warrior gave the ultimate sacrifice in doing their jobs. Their ages ranged from eighteen to twenty-three. Within a week or so of coming home, they gave it all. So I would ask you if you would, join me in twenty-one seconds of silence, please. Thank you. The fallen words are borrowed from an image that I had found earlier posted by zingerbug.com. And it just touched me that I think it kind of encapsulates what we're trying to do with this tribute this evening. It's titled "To A Fallen Hero." You should never be forgotten, but though you may be gone from this world, your spirit will live forever. It lives in the laughing eyes of children who are free from want and oppression. It lives in the bravery and conviction of those who still struggle for liberty. And it lives in me, for I promise to cherish ever-breadth of freedom that you paid the ultimate price to secure. I ask only that I might be granted some small fraction of your courage and strength to face the challenges of my life with an honor and dignity worthy of your legacy. May you rest in eternal peace, safe in the knowledge that your sacrifice was not made in vain. And a tribute to our fallen soldiers, honor the fallen, remember their sacrifice, celebrate the gift of freedom paid with the blood of heroes. Blessed to those who serve. This also borrowed from sweetspirits.com. So thank you for joining me in this few moments of a tribute to some of our fallen soldiers. With that, I will call to order our regular scheduled city council meeting on Monday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, at approximately seven oh five P. M. All those present tonight are the mayor, as well as five of our council members and one who I believe has zoomed in for an extenuating circumstances of a medical condition. So we hope Mr. Krayling can hear and participate with us fully tonight. And as I have been advised, and you have seen it in other letter, because of the extenuating circumstances, he will be accorded all the rights and privileges of a duly elected official. I'd like to welcome all of you who are here this evening. Looking to have any members of the press? I don't see Caitlin or God or Conner. We're good? All right? Thanks for that. Also present with us tonight is our city administrator, Mr. Madden, our city clerk, Ms. Miller, and our city attorney, Mr. John Dugan. Appreciate you being here as well as various members of department heads that are in the audience or over here. Y'all would try to keep the bar awake. We'll do that. So appreciate y'all being here also. The invocation and pledge of allegiance was to be done by Mr. Krayling tonight. I would ask, is anyone would like to volunteer for the invocation? Mr. Madden, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I'd invite anybody who would like to please pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given for us to be here tonight. We hope that you open our ears, open our hearts, close our mouths as much as possible, help us to understand each other, and help us to work to continue to create a city that glorifies you, Lord. We ask that you be with all of those who have prayers that have been spoken and unspoken, and that you let us take your light with us when we live here tonight, Lord. It's things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Now, I'd invite anybody who would like to to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Madden. Appreciate that. Tonight, one of the most pleasurable things I have is the issuing of various proclamations. And this evening, we're honored to have a couple of proclamations. One of them is for one of our woodworking guild proclamation who's been in our city for over, I think, forty years. So is there anyone here from the Woodworkers Guild this evening? Allow me to read it. Whereas in June of nineteen eighty-one, author M. Welling, W. Clayton Jackson, Robert A. Harvey, Michael P. McDonough, J. C. Thompson, signed the original partnership agreement to establish the Greenville Woodworkers Guild. And whereas the founders had a vision to serve the community by developing association to promote the art of woodworking, to provide woodworking education, and to perform charitable activities. And whereas since then, membership has grown to more than eight hundred men, women, and teens. And whereas the Woodworkers Guild headquarters has moved from temporary borrowed spaces to a world-class facility, complete with an amazing shop, a presentation auditorium with tiered seating for three hundred, and a library full of woodworking magazines and books. And whereas members have completed dozens of charitable projects for local nonprofit groups, taught hundreds of mentoring classes, been featured prominently in local arts activities, and enjoyed fellowship with hundreds of others to share a love for making things out of wood and teaching others to do the same. The Guild's members log thousands of hours annually in charitable projects that benefit our community through several agencies. And whereas the Guild continues to grow, and the focus and dedication to the community has not changed since its founding. Now, therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, do proclaim the City of Malden is proud to have the Greenville Woodworkers Guild headquartered here and wish them continued success on their fortieth anniversary. Proclamation will be presented to them, I believe, Saturday morning. They will have the actual anniversary celebration and a presentation. Unless they come up and get it, I'll take it. Also, another one that I really am going to enjoy, because I get to do it with a former classmate of Hill Press High School, former cheerleader, Ms. Kathy Cannon, now Kathy Cannon Abba Abka, who is the president or the regent of Nathaniel Green's chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. So Kathy, you're joining me down front. Proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of a limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the frameth of the Constitution of the United States of America, of the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designated in September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thank you. Do you like standing?
It's dangerous to give me a microphone, because I was a teacher for twenty-five years of American history and government. And I would say that U.S. Constitution is certainly something that should be celebrated. And perhaps the best thing to think about on this day is that the preamble of the Constitution, written by a thirty-five-year-old New Yorker who actually attended the Constitutional Convention from Philadelphia, in Philadelphia, when he wrote "We, the People," he wrote the preamble to the Constitution. His name was Governor Morris. And most people know about John Adams and Jefferson and James Madison when they think about the Constitution. But the preamble was written by Governor Morris. And Governor Morris wasn't a governor. That was his first name. It was a Dutch, his Dutch mother's maiden name, Governor. And he had every, he was our first disabled founding father. He had his leg amputated, his left leg amputated in a carriage incident. He was burned severely on his right side at the age of fourteen. But he never let it stop him. And he became one of our more important but less well-known. And he said "We, the People." He wrote those words in order to form a more perfect union, knowing that we're not perfect. So I think today we ought to think about that we need to go back to being "We, the People" and try to improve and make a more perfect union in the future.
Thank you, everyone. Have fun. To our agenda, we are at the reading and approval of minutes. We have four different sections here. We have the city council meeting minutes of August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. What would be the pleasure of council?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Mr. Madden, Ms. King. Any discussions, corrections, clarifications needed? All those in favor accepting as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like sign? Hear none, they are approved as submitted, seven oh. Special called council meeting minutes of August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ms. King, and second for Mr. Madden. Any discussion, clarification, adjustments, corrections? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Like sign? Hear none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Special called council meeting of August the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve and distribute, Mayor.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Any corrections, adjustments? Whoops, sorry. Ms. Kusner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was out of town, but attended the executive session via Zoom, so I refrain from voting.
Okay. You are entitled to vote if you so choose. You did attend via Zoom. If you feel you properly heard everything and can...
Wasn't in the official...
You didn't come to the official meeting?
Right. Well, the council meeting before it went into executive session, I did not attend.
Okay. All right. So no, I didn't. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Special called council meeting of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
To the big set, to distribute.
Motion, Mr. Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion, clarification, corrections? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Hear none, the minutes are approved as submitted, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our public comment, realizing that in our normal council meeting, we have two areas of public comment. The first area of public comment is reserved for items of businesses coming for this council this evening. So if it's an agenda item, you should have signed up for session. Standard of regular meeting, public comment rules, any person wishing to address the council must fill out the speaker's log. I've done that. I have it here. You will hear from me on items on the agenda. Based on the length of the agenda and the number of those that have signed up, we will limit comments to three minutes or less. So I'll try to time you with that and give you the little buzzy sound that's on the phone when it comes up, kind of thing. We ask that proper decorum be observed by the members of council, by our speakers, among the audience. Please refrain from abusive, profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protests, and other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of the business of the meeting. Personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use the public here and all the public comment here for the purpose of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on request of the mayor will be grounds for ending the speaker's time at the podium and our removal of any disruptive person from the meeting. Please direct your comments to the chair. Council at all times can ask for a clarification of a comment you make, but it is not a dialogue back and forth. But just make your comments there. I would ask that the speaker before you has basically said everything you want to say. You're more than free to say ditto everything he said, or elaborate on it, or add to it, kind of thing. But for the sake of speed, let's not repeat the same thing over and over. But it's your right. It's your time. All right, our first speaker tonight is an agenda item, will be Ms. Melanie Giles. If you will come to the podium and state your name and address for us, please, for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melanie Giles. I'm representing Blue Water Civil Design at seven eighteen Lowndes Hill Road in Greenville, What I wanted to address tonight is item B under the second reading section of the agenda, the ordinance to rezone twelve and a half acres located Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Schultz Road. We would like to table that item for several months, if possible. This would just be to allow more time for us to study the market for larger commercial tracks and see what needs to really go into that intersection. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Speaker is Mr. Mark Springback?
Old works, don't worry.
Well, I'm southern. I apologize. I butcher a lot of things.
I'm Mark Steenback, twenty-four Trailstream Drive, Malden, two-nine-six-six-two. I'm here to speak on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. First off, to thank the committee for passing along the recommendation as it was, as it came from planning committee. It is important to us that we be able to, if at all possible, operate a thrift store here in Malden. You'll hear more about what we do, but I want to talk about what we do as far as a store. We keep cleaning, neat, and organized stores. I'd really encourage you all, if you haven't, you know, go all the way down to End of Butler, walk in our Malden Road or Woodford Road location, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. We are donor and shopper-friendly. We represent, we know we represent Habitat in the community. We see nine hundred people a day. So for us to put our best foot forward is very, very important, and we continue to do that here in Malden. We don't put boxes out. We don't keep donations outside or anything like that. We understand and I appreciate what the council is trying to do in terms of making sure that when thrift stores and other businesses come into the community, that they consider the community, we definitely want to do that as well. Our expectations, we honestly expect to see double the foot traffic. We expect to see another seven to nine hundred people a day with this location that we're trying to acquire here in Malden. We'll generate enough revenue in the first year to cover the construction of two of our new homes. And we expect within the next three years, we'll bring that up to five homes worth of revenue to be generated here in Malden. We will provide the Malden citizens with new and used affordable items, appliances, furniture, flooring, tools, construction materials, household items. All these things will be available to our citizens here in Malden. We divert waste at a click of over three million pounds last year, and probably closer to three-point-two or three-point-three million pounds this year. That's going to save the city money and time, though. We expect to create initially fifteen jobs, and probably over the lifetime of that ten-year lease that we hope to sign. So we expect about twenty-five jobs to be created by this one operation. We want to continually raise the bar for what thrift operations look like. That's what we take pride in. We are told constantly that our stores don't look like thrift stores, and that's exactly what we're at. So I would humbly ask that the council continue, of course, taking the bar, and as it's been written, approved, the rule has been...
Next one is Mr. Free.
Good evening. I'm Monroe Free, Habitat for Humanity, Greenville County. My address is six-oh-two Rosebud Lane, Greer, South Carolina. I'm the guy who gets blamed if something goes wrong at Habitat. So I'm here to talk about who we are, why we do what we do. So if you look at our mission statement, it says that Habitat builds homes, communities, and hope. We're about to embark on our four-hundredth home here in Greenville County. We do build homes. We're famous for that, because Jimmy Carter made us famous for that. We also repair, do weatherizations on homes. This year, we'll do about fifty repairs and weatherizations. We just finished one on a veteran's home here in Malden, two weeks ago, I believe it was. So we repair and weatherize homes. We believe homes are important. They're the foundation for, a foundation for families to grow from. We also build communities. We make our communities better. You look at all sorts of outcomes that Habitat homeowners produce, things like improved academic performance by their children. Sixty-eight percent of our families tell us their kids' grades, excuse me, improve. If you look at health outcomes, if you look at what makes communities better, public participation. Our families, this last election, over eighty percent of our families voted in that election. We're making communities better by what we do. Finally, we build hope, and you're going to hear from one of our families later. But it's about providing an opportunity for people with low incomes, who don't have opportunities otherwise. They get to own their own home and all the residual effects of that. You know, we guarantee each family, we guarantee each family will pay less than thirty percent of their income on their housing. So that means they have money to spend on things like medicine for when their kids get sick, extracurriculars at school. It is a transformational effect when you give a family an opportunity to build wealth through equity they can pass on to their families. That's how our program works. So if you look at Greenville County right now, of all the issues we face, perhaps the most dominating one is the lack of affordable housing. Everybody's talking about it. Three, four years ago, we did some research, not we Habitat, but Knoxville, excuse me, Greenville County, set over twelve thousand units short of affordable housing. We have a crisis in our county. And if you look what the city of Greenville has done, if you look at what Greenville County has done, if you look what Simpsonville has done, if you look what Greer has done, they have made significant investments in affordable housing, because they believe it is the key to economic health in our communities. It amazes me frankly that you're having a discussion about something that's going to limit the ability for a leading agency in affordable housing to do more. It's a time when we ought to be encouraging agencies, groups, and other developers to do more affordable housing. So I'm here to say, please, look at this resolution as it is now presented, changed, amended by the Planning Commission. Give us the opportunity to raise more revenue so that we can provide more affordable housing.
My name is Glenda Fair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also happen to be chairman of the board for Habitat. Before I start, I would like for each of you to think about something, to answer the question, what is your why? I ask myself that question, what is my why? Oftentimes, as I search for the answer, I found that my why is service, and volunteering is the tool that I utilize to accomplish this task. However, my reason for sharing tonight gives me a glimpse back to the year twenty eighteen. A young ninety-year-old Brooklyn New Yorker asked family and friends to help her relocate to her home state of South Carolina. This ninety-year-old New Yorker had no children and was the last of a family member of eight brothers and sisters. Since why is my service, I was asked to assist with securing a place to live and the task of furnishing these quarters. You see, a retired educator has a modest income with which to survive, and certainly never extra finances for moving and furnishing an apartment. Finding a place to stay was relatively easy compared to furnishing this small studio apartment, making it look like something that one could call home. I researched my options, and Habitat restored one with flying colors. I was able to furnish this studio with furniture that said, "Love and welcome back home." Ladies and gentlemen, Habitat of Greenville Restored is not an ordinary store, but a place where people trust that their memories will give others pleasure. It is a place where the items purchased made this ninety-year-old New Yorker feel right at home. Now, with her small budget, she was able to bring some cherished pictures and a lifetime, many lifetime achievement awards in the field of education. Ladies and gentlemen, Habitat Restored filled the gap. I hope that you understand this contribution to your community not only benefited young ladies like our ninety-year-old New Yorker, but benefits lifelong residents of the great city of Malden, residents working, playing, making an economic impact to the town where they live. May I also note an added bonus to employees that work and live with Habitat and live and work at Habitat, the opportunity to work in the city where they live, a partial answer to our transportation problem. I could go on and on about numerous benefits with Habitat that I want. I just want you to think about what is your why? And what information did you discover from my comments? Why would this information be important? How can this information be used to make informed decisions that benefit this great city of Malden and allow Habitat, Greenville, and other businesses to partner in that success? and allow Habitat, Greenville, and other businesses to partner in that success? How can we apply this information to future decisions that will benefit the city of Malden? Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Kevin Conway. Do my address. It's 3209 Hartford Way, 22 North Carolina. Um, I work for Wheeler, Wheeler Real Estate Company. Um, we're the landlord for 207 West Butler Road, the former Bylo box. Um, just to give you a little color on our company, Wheeler Real Estate is a publicly traded REIT. We own and manage about 65 grocery anchor shopping centers from, uh, Washington DC down to Tampa, Florida. Just as an example of our portfolio of shopping centers, we have 16 Food Lion Centers, seven Kroger Harris Teeter Centers, Five Low's Foods, seven Piggly Wiggly's, Republic's, three KJs, two Windexies, um, and several others. Um, our company has great relationships and have done many leases with all these grocery stores. Obviously, we've been trying to get a grocery store to replace the Bylo. So we've been marketing this box really since we heard they were closing about six months ago. Um, we've thrown out many incentives to the broker community, even to retailers to come to the city of Malden and open here. Um, and just to give you guys an example, um, in addition to the other grocery stores we've reached out to, um, I got a long list of about 100 other retailers that we've reached out to, uh, including but not limited to Aldi, Foods, Lidl, Earth Fair, Hobby Lobby, All the Soft Good Users, TJ Maxx, Home Goods, Marshalls, L's Outlet, Ross, Harbor Freight Tools, Floor and Decor, Variety Wholesalers, et cetera. I think we've done our homework and we're a proven operator and owner across the country. We've also analyzed splitting this space. That's something that we've done with developers as well. Cost to split this box here is close to a million dollars. So if we can find a single user tenant for this box, um, we'd rather lease entire space to one tenant. Some people know this, some may, may not. The Bylo lease doesn't even expire for two more years. So, you know, we don't want to have a dark tenant. The community doesn't want to have a dark tenant. It doesn't help our existing customers. I don't think it helps the community to have a, a dark box like that for two years. At the end of the day, we have to do what's, what's in the best interest for our shareholders and investors. From an ownership's perspective, having, you know, having Habitat as a tenant makes a lot of sense, uh, as a property owner. It's a long-term lease commitment from a, uh, from a credit tenant and a very well-spread, uh, respected operator. Also, we have Habitat at, uh, other of our shopping centers throughout the country. The community really likes what they do and love Habitat. The last point I just like to make is we, we bought this center in 2015. We pay on average about $152,000 a year in taxes. So the last six years, we've paid to Greenville County about, uh, $900,000 in taxes. So we want to continue to have a, a wonderful relationship, city of Malden and one of those property owners. Thank you.
Mr. Randall Bailey.
Mayor, thank you for that. I don't get called Mr. very often. Appreciate that, councilman. Let me, uh, I am here tonight to support Habitat number one. I'm a part of their CE Bill program. Uh, I also am representing them on the potential lease here. I want to talk to you just very quickly, four things I want to bring your attention about as a, as a commercial real estate broker that has been selling Malden since 1976. Uh, I can't tell you how many projects I've been involved in in the city of Malden, but let me just turn your, uh, attention to one, uh, series. We have brought, uh, development here that, which is now under construction. Four different projects totaling 900,000 square feet of space in the city of Malden. To this point in those four projects, uh, we have landed four new businesses for the city of Malden, 110, um, employees. We are negotiating with another 50,000 feet that will bring 80 more. And the mayor was gracious enough to meet with a company who is thinking about coming here occupying 300,000 square feet, all in the city of Malden. Okay? Which is very difficult to do, folks, industrial, industrial property. So it was a bigger picture here of some things. I hope that you will accept the proposal, listen, the resolution that's there, uh, or the ordinance for these points. Number one, the, the original 200-foot setback, it seemed very excessive when the city has an industrial zoning ordinance that allows 25-foot setbacks against even residential property. So it seems a little inconsistent to throw something like 200 feet as a setback, especially when it, it, when it involves a, an existing business and an existing development that came in with the city. It looks like you might be changing the rules a little bit after they've invested the millions they've invested here to build the center. Um, number two, the use is retail as it appeals to the public and it's selling goods to the public. It's not wholesale. And by the way, it was mentioned about S1, you can't do what they do in an S1 zoning in the city of Malden. So you'd be ruling out almost them coming here in any form or fashion to the city of Malden. I'm not real sure that's the message you want to give. And I, so I understand quality. If you look at these projects we've just talked about, every one of them is Class A industrial product. And, uh, they're good. They're all exposure with exposure to the city of, um, I mean to 385, which is, uh, one of your major quarters. So the last thing I would just simply say is, we don't want to, to look like we're changing the rules in the middle of the game for people who have already invested here. There is not really a, a, a problem here, um, that the ordinance addressed to start with. And I've sat in a little bit of your chair as I was chairman of the Greenville County Plan Commission for three years, my time to it for six. So I've sort of sat in your chair a little bit and I understand the things. I know you want quality. We all do. We've tried, uh, through our efforts here over, since 1976 to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, gentlemen. I failed to recognize when I did the welcome and I should have. We're proud to have one of our former mayors, Mr. Dennis Rains, with us tonight. So thank you. And now welcome on the other side.
I can't believe you said you're proud to have me. Yeah, but it is good to be back here. And then by the way, I really commend you on what you've done here with these flags. Uh, Dennis Rains, 305 East Butler Road, you won years. Been at Habitat now going on seven years. And, uh, if you keep me, I'll, I'll be there another eight months, 13 days, four hours, 19 minutes, and three seconds. And I'll join the ranks of Mr. Merritt and Mr. Black, called retired. Now, I hope I didn't take up any of my time, but anyway.
I've started right now.
Reset, reset. Uh, no, overreaching decisions can sometimes have unintended consequences. There were two, two thrift stores in the city of Malden. There's now one. One is gone. A few years back, I can remember, and some of you may correct me, I can remember cleaning up a sign ordinance by working with the businesses. And I think we did 13 amendments. And later there was a code in place and all the businesses have come into compliance. I believe that this is your actual intent and working with this one business could probably help put a similar code in place. Not eliminate an entire segment of retail businesses ever located in the city of Malden. Again, overreaching decisions have unintended consequences. You know, I appreciate, and I'm sure you do too, on Mr. Dearhoff's research, okay? And let me refer you to page 24 of that. Called Growth of Industry, thrift and secondhand goods stores are growing on a national scale, both in number and in popularity. Prior to COVID-19, the industry was growing at an annual rate of 7%. Additionally, the appeal of thrift store shopping is growing beyond low-income households to include middle and upper-income households. Thrift store shopping has also increased in popularity with younger shoppers, who not only find the lower prices to be sensible, but are also attracted to the uniqueness and quality of its items sold.
David.
Overreaching decisions can sometimes have unintended messages. I've known most of you quite sometimes. Some of you may say, yeah, I know. And I don't believe it was your intent to deny Habitat located in what we consider one of the premier locations in the county to further our mission, providing affordable housing for those who would wait at your tables, might be preparing your food, who would service thrones at the new Marriott opening up soon, or check you out at the retail location, I mean, soon to your downtown. These folks, like Amanda, who would speak hopefully after me, have a dream of owning their own house in Malden. Unintended messages. Here's a, here's a headline in the August 30th paper, "Malden Seeks to Limit New Thrift Stock, Thrift Shops", delaying planned new restore in former Bylo site. So the headline in tomorrow's paper could be this, maybe. Maybe this is the unintended message. Last night, Malden City Council voted against the unanimous decision of their planning commission for denying Habitat for Humanity the opportunity to locate or restore on West Butler Road. And in so doing, sending a clear message that they do not support the efforts of Habitat, providing affordable housing options in Greenville County. Or our preferred headline, last time, Malden City Council unanimously voted last night to support the ongoing efforts of Habitat for Humanity of Greenville County, providing affordable housing throughout the Golden Strip and the entire county. They supported the unanimous decision of the planning commission by allowing Habitat for Humanity to locate a restore in Butler Square Shopping Center. Obviously, the decision is yours. Habitat hopes and desires that you will support the unanimous decision and wisdom of your planning commission tonight. Join us and them in continuing the efforts to provide affordable housing in Greenville. Thank you for the jobs that you do, very familiar with the time it takes.
Hi, I'm Amanda Piper and I'm a Habitat homeowner. And I live at 18 Furley Reed Drive, um, in downtown Greenville. A quick story on what Habitat means to me and how it has impacted our lives. Grace, my daughter, which is over there, um, came to Habitat of Greenville in 2017 from a bad relationship with a husband that did drugs. We got to the point where we had to make a hard decision to leave and provide what I can for my daughter. So one day we left everything. It was a sad day. Right, Grace was, Grace was two years old at the time. In this day and age, trying to provide and care for my daughter on one income has really been difficult. Thankfully, a close friend came alongside to help me and we got an apartment together. It was a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment where we lived for three years. We shared everything and Grace and I slept in the same room on a trundle bed. Realizing that Grace was growing up, I started thinking about the future and looking for help. Got really discouraged because everywhere I turned, there was nothing available. Looked up Section 8 housing, hood housing, and everyone was on a waiting list. So I stopped and I prayed and for days I prayed and asked the Lord to help me. At that time, I felt I had to try one more place. Habitat for Humanity of Greenville was the place I should try. I put it in, I put it in an application and within two weeks, I got an email to come in for an interview. At this point, we started the process to become a Habitat homeowner. Every step was a challenge in what I was willing to do for Grace to have a home. This was about a two-year process from beginning to end. We started building my house in September of 2019. And we were able to move in during March of 2020, just two weeks before COVID hit. What a blessing. I have a three-bedroom, two-bath house that my daughter saw her family and her friends coming together to help us build. That's not something that you can ever teach, teach a child. In those moments, you see the hand of the Lord providing for us. It's like the world stopped to bring us hope and love, something I personally never expected to happen to us. This is truly a blessing, knowing I can now provide for my daughter. A mortgage that I can afford without going into debt, the confidence to provide a bedroom Grace doesn't have to share, a place we can all call home that brings us closer as a family. A neighborhood, a community of families that have different stories, but all of us have one thing in common. Habitat of Greenville was the answer to our prayers. We are all family now with the homes thanks to Habitat. There's no place like home.
Mr. Heisch, you got Rhodes. You want to hold for the second comment or you want to, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Law, uh, on annexation, we've got a few of those coming on the agenda tonight, so I would allow you to speak to that process. Or would you like to hold also the second comment? I like that. Come on.
20-year resident, uh, Greenville County. Really appreciated that. Um, I try to be quick here. Let me go through my notes, but actually wanted to talk about annexation with regard to state law, 1994, uh, Planning Enabling Act. And what I see, what I feel, it appears that the annexation step, uh, to, or the rezoning step is being abbreviated through annexation. And not fully educated on the whole topic, but I, but I have read the Enabling Act. To me, it's pretty clear. Part I don't understand is how the annexation in this city allows the lack of posting, the, the, the lack of, uh, uh, in, any sort of public hearing to be held. And in one specific example, close to my home, um, got it, got all our 12, um, housing all around. And Malden came in annexed and decided, has decided to put 100, uh, homes on 14 acres, completely counter to the existing Greenville County zoning. And I do understand Malden uses zoning, but there was no public hearing. There was definitely a point we missed. And, uh, I feel like that's, that's being missed here. Also thinks a little bit of conflict of interest, uh, just purely because you got your develop, you've got your business development leader who's working with a developer to decide what the future zone's going to be. And it becomes that zone. So the community's kind of left out of the step. When it comes to annexation, it appears the county, the city's doing a really good job of following all the right steps when it comes to rezoning. But specifically to annexation, it appears there's some steps that have been left out. And I would encourage everybody to read 1994, uh, Planning Enabling Act. I think it's pretty clear, Section 7 spells it out pretty clearly. It doesn't take exemption to annexation. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Law. If you would get Mr. Madden's card and give him a call, he can probably set some time up, Mr. Dearhoff, to explain the two different processes that are up, Mr. Dearhoff, to explain the two different processes that are used between a rezoning versus an annexation and a default zone.
Yes.
So be glad to if you've got a card.
If you've got one right now.
Thanks, sir. All right, at that point, this public comment section is done. We look forward to hearing Mr. Heisch later on. Next item on the agenda is a report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do not have much to share. I do want to thank Community Development Department and Public Works. Please fire all the volunteers that helped make the barbecue festival this past weekend a success. Please visit the city's Facebook page to see pictures of the event along with the winners. We'll highlight a couple of the winners on the event. First place for pork shoulder or butts is Tail Gator Hater was first place. For ribs, it was the Hog Mafia. For brisket, casual smokers. And the people's choice was Attaboy Barbecue. So thanks staff for putting on a great event. It was well-attended, and thank you, council, for your support. That concludes my report.
Mr. Madden.
Next is the... Yes, sir. Mr. Madden, I was actually asked this afternoon, and you may be able to provide this information, not necessarily tonight, but during the Anything But competition, I was requested a list of the winners and what it was that they made, just because they couldn't remember the winners and what they had made. So if I could get that list to provide to somebody, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. The list of all the winners will be on the city's Facebook page as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
For our standing committees, first, Finance and Policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the only other thing I would add to what Mr. Madden said is, next year, there probably should be a competition for most witty names for the barbecue places because they have some great ones out there, so. Yep, moving on. So from Finance and Policy, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of items coming out, four items to be exact, coming out, Finance and Policy, they're actually big in the committee, they're not out later in the meeting, and just appreciate all that the committee did to push those forward to have some great discussion later. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds. Public Safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing at this time.
Public Works, Mr. Crayling. I'd just like to say thank you to all the Public Works folks for making the barbecue festival a success. I saw them running around, had conversations with them. They were working hard and making sure everybody had a good time, and I'd like to thank them for that. Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. Economic Plan and Envelope, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some items on the agenda, so I'll just let us keep moving.
Sir, Building Co., Mr. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that there were 12 new businesses that opened in August in Malden.
Our chamber has ribbon cut lines up for the foreseeable future through the end of the year, so we're proud of the new businesses, so thank you for that. Recreation, Mr. Black.
Another thing at this time, Mr. Mayor, from Recreation.
Yes, sir. Then when we move into unfinished business, the first one is our ordinances of second reading. Ms. Miller.
Our first ordinance is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately one acre located at 227 East Butler Road and providing an effective date. And this property is directly across the street from CVS Pharmacy on East Butler Road.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Let it come out of business. Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning on second reading.
Okay, I have a motion to approve second reading of the rezon is our second. Second, Mr. Black. Any discussion?
Comment, Mr. Mayor, for those that have been in Malden not quite as long as you have, you've been there all your life, but they will remember Barbary's on the corner. That's where you traded parking, that's this piece of property, and I think Mr. Barbary and Ms. Barbary have come to be with the Lord, so this is the property they had to rezon across.
This is only the house property, not the trailer park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to rezon the property approximately one acre at 227 East Butler Road, say aye.
Aye.
I think I heard Mr. Crayton come in with a yes, and Mr. Matney with no, so carry six, one. Noted that, Ms. Miller. All right, next item on the agenda, this...
Next is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately 12.5 acres located at Ashmore Bridge Road, Fort Shoals Road. This is at the corner in front of the Old Bonnie Break Golf Course. There is a request to table this item.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the property that the applicant would like to table at this time. So I'll make a motion to table it until they're ready.
Motion to table, is there a second? Second. A second, Mr. Matney, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to table the agenda item seven B, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion to table carry seven, zero. The next item coming before us would be, as a committee of the whole view of the informal method, what would be the pleasure of council?
Move we consider this informally?
Motion to consider informally the item of seven C of ordinance related to the Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the committee of the whole view of the informal method, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, hearing none, the committee of the whole informal method to approve seven, zero. I believe this would be related to public safety. Ms. King, you want to take it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion on second reading to approve an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property located at 9 East Butler Road in the city of Malden.
I have a motion for Ms. King, is there a second?
Oh-heartedly, second.
Oh-heartedly, got it. Thank you, Mr. Madden. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. King.
Thank you. I'd just like to add, this is obviously our current headquarters for our Fire Department, and just wanted to remind everyone that our Fire Department will not be unhoused. We're in the process of relocating and building a new Fire Department on West Butler and Plant Street. So just wanted to make sure everyone so noted that, and myself and Mr. Matney are pretty excited by that. Right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other discussion, comments? Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the last time this came up, I was deciding to vote to this and give more thought to it as I move forward with what I believe is the highest best use of the property would be. And as I've given it more thought, I am not necessarily opposed at some point in selling the property, but as I look at it, I think it's a strategic importance right now to hold on to that, to hold it within the city's ability to, as we look at the downtown area and things are changing, what I'd like to be able to do is look at that property and say, not make a rash decision and make it quickly. So after giving it a lot of thought, I'm still stuck to my initial thought that I believe it's a property that's strategically important based on where it is within our front yard, and can, and will not support it this time either, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, motion to pursue a purchase and sales agreement for the property that currently contains our Fire Department headquarters and Fire Department, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business first readings. Ms. Miller.
The next two ordinances go together. This property is directly across the street from the new Harrington subdivision being construction on Fort Shoals Road. First is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Bolak Properties LLC and located at 2001 Fort Shoals Road by 100% petition method, and to establish a zoning classification of our 10 residential.
My building services, that will also, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I will make a motion to approve this annexation for both of these tracks on first reading.
We have a motion to approve annexation for both Track One and Track Two, and motion, is there a second?
Mayor, I think we have to do those separately because we have two different owners.
Mr. Matney.
Back to me. All right. At this time, I'll make a motion, or I'll retract my first motion for the two tracks. And I'll make a motion to approve the annexation of Track One on first reading, and that is the one on 2001 Fort Shoals Road.
Second, Mr. Black. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor? Yes, I have a, I want to make sure that I understand something. Currently, the county has owned this as RS, and by us annexing it into the city of Malden to R10, we'll be taking the density from one home per 25,000 square feet to one home every 10,000 square feet. Is that correct?
I see a nodding of the head from Mr. Dearhoff.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, then I would like to just make a, let everyone know that I will be voting against this as to the, until the Ashmore Bridge Road is approved by South Carolina DOT. I feel this is an awful lot of homes that could impact that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. Any other discussion? Hearing none, there is a motion before us to an ordinance on first reading for the annexation of property located at 2001 Fort Shoals Road, and to establish a zoning classification bar 10 residential. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Six, one, Mr. Crayton, dissenting. Okay. Skip Ms. Miller and go straight to Ms. Kuzner since this is a property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. At this time, on first reading, I will make a motion to approve the annexation on Track Two, which is the corner of Fort Shoals Road and Union Church Road.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Thank you, sir.
So stated in the documentation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Kojak White Horse and located at White Horse Forks, Shoals Road and Union Church Road, and to establish a zoning classification of our 10 residential and C2 commercial for the property on the front, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
No, Mr. Crayton, dissenting. A six, one, motion carries on first reading. Next item before us, Ms. Miller.
Next is an amendment to the Malden zoning ordinance establishing definitions and conditional use standards for thrift stores, consignment stores, and light businesses, and to establish the zoning districts for which they can locate.
Also coming from Business Coast and Services, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to approve the text amendment to Malden zoning ordinance on first reading.
I have a motion to accept the text amendment to the Malden zoning ordinance regarding thrift and consignment stores on first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Matney. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd kind of like to try and get this discussion back on track, because I think that we really have gone off the rails as far as this is concerned. Over the past couple of meetings, somehow, a discussion about zoning ordinances and looking at Malden's future has been painted that Malden has the target on the back of an incredibly worthwhile charity. I don't think that there's a person in this room that won't sing the praises of Habitat for Humanity. I'm a huge fan of Habitat and what Habitat does. I am incredibly impressed with Ms. Piper coming in tonight, and I wish she was still here, because the bravery that it took for her to leave the situation that she was in because of the unceasing love and dedication for her daughter, and what she has been able to do. I think that she should be congratulated for that. But this is not about Habitat for Humanity. I mean, if we need to talk about Habitat for a couple of seconds, you know, the fact of the matter is, Habitat's restores are not in municipal limits in Greenville County. On Wade Hampton Boulevard, they're in the county. On Woodruff Road, they're in the county. They're not in a city, nor are they abutting a central business district anywhere. And that's ultimately what this would do. It would butt up against the central business district that we have and are developing here. But be that as it may, this again is not about Habitat. This is about us looking at Malden's future. This was something that was in process before Habitat came up. One of the things that Mr. Free said was, you know, we build communities. Guess what? We do too, and that's what we're elected to do. We have worked very hard. Former Mayor Raines was here as we started putting the MSIP together to build the downtown City Center Village, and everyone shared a vision of what that could and would look like. We understand what it takes for economic development. We understand what we need to do and what we need to have in order to attract the kind of retailers that we have. You know, we, as Mr. Conway said, you know, he's got to pay attention to his shareholders. Well, we've got to pay attention to our voters, who are excited about what City Center Village can and will become. We're starting to see those announcements made, but we've been very intentional in that process. And that's what this zoning ordinance is designed to do by its nature, is to help foster the kinds of businesses that will be attracted to our downtown. And frankly, I think, and I will make the motion, that we move back to the original version before the planning commission got in front of it, that has the distant separations, because I think that that's extremely important, especially as we move forward. I also want to take issue that the city of Malden is doing anything to curtail affordable housing in any way, shape, or form. As a matter of fact, the city of Malden has been a leader in affordable housing in Greenville County. If you want to take a look at the project that we worked on in conjunction with GCRA at Miller and Old Mill, if you want to take a look at the project that's currently under construction on East Butler across the street from Mutt's, if you want to look at the project that is currently in the planning process behind South State Bank, we have been a leader in making sure that the folks that work in Malden have an affordable place to live. But we also have to be able to balance that with economic development. And it is, it's spinning plates. There's no question about it. We have to walk that line. But I think that we need to have the original version back the way it was. But I, I think that, that we need to have the original version back the way that it was before the planning commission took away the separation requirements. So at the appropriate time, I will make that motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, there's currently one thrift store already in close proximity to our city center. While not technically a thrift store, bin time sells items at $5 and less and is also located in that corridor. City leaders have a vision for the city center and surrounding corridor. As elected officials, our loyalty is to our constituents and to the betterment of our city. Therefore, I am also suggesting that we put the, use the original version, where we put in the 200-foot separation and that the store should be located within a multi-tenant shopping center. In addition, I would add a separation of one mile from any other thrift store as we did with small box variety stores.
Those in form of amendments or just?
Yes, I would, I would like to propose a, a motion to amend.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Your motion is to amend the current text amendment to Malden zoning ordinance to reactivate 1037 section one separation of 200 feet along with adding back 1037 to multi-tenant shopping center and adding a one-mile separation. Is that correctly stated in your amendment motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Amended by adding back one and two and adding one-mile separation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kuzner. Let me catch my documentation over. And a second for Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just feel that I need to go on record because, yeah, we are the city leaders and we do represent this entire city and I have talked to our residents. And quite frankly, I think we have an economic need for a store such as Habitat. I, I think it's been presented us, to us tonight that their stores are different than typical thrift stores that some of us may stereotype. I frequent these stores. I shop these stores. I have friends who shop these stores. And quite, again, I, I think there's a need in our city for a Habitat resale store. I, for one, cannot support an amendment that would eliminate this store in our city. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other comments? Mr. Black.
Mayor, I'd go along, Ms. King. If anyone visited a store on Woodruff Road, I know it's not in the city, but I went to that store out there and it's very clean, well-represented, no trash or anything like some of the other donations. And I mean, I, I think it's a worthwhile project. And I'm still confused, if you go to page 99 on the ordinance information, the draft ordinance presented at the public hearing did not include limitations on the number of license or separation requirement from existing stores, restrictions on the store size, or specific requirements for drive-through lanes. Now, I'm still confused because the planning commission went on one thing and they changed their ruling on it. And that's what they brought back to us, is their recommendation. And the 200-foot thing, I mean, we got the other shopping centers, there's not a 200-foot buffer between those and residential areas. I think it'd be putting a hardship on the people that use the habitats and they do a great job. And I mean, go to the store Woodruff Road, the only one I've seen. It is very clean, well-kept, organized, and I think it is a worthwhile, thanks for this. It's not like some of the other thrift stores. They don't have junk laying around. I even noticed down at the Salvation Army, it is closed now and someone left a chair out in the parking lot, I noticed it Sunday. Even though the store had been closed, it says, no dumping, do not leave anything store closed, somebody left a chair on the side of the road down. I mean, I'll have to support Habitat and I don't, I think we're penalizing them because they do a good job on what they do. I'll have to support Habitat and that means going against this ordinance amendment and then I'll have to go against the ordinance amendment.
Mr. Black.
Good. I was just going to make sure. So for clarification, what we would be voting on when it comes time to vote is the amendment that would reapply the two items that the pending zoning had taken out. That's correct.
Yes, plus it would, she's proposing adding a one-mile separation between thrift stores.
And I had that as a unanimous vote from the planning commission? What was presented before us?
They did forward to us for our consideration through the committees.
Correct.
The deletion of one and two.
And it came out of committee? It came out of committee as?
Any made a recommendation to forward it to full council?
What planning commission brought forward this amendment? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, the, the title of this agenda item is not a text amendment to Malden zoning ordinance regarding Habitat for Humanity and Habitat Restore. It is regarding thrift and consignment stores. So I don't think, again, I don't know that there's anybody that would argue that Habitat Restore is different from most thrift stores, but there are other thrift stores that don't apply the same standard that Habitat does. Without having these sorts of protections in place, we leave the door open for those things down the road. I do want to say that despite all of the discussion that has happened and, and frankly, a, a couple of terse conversations that, that I've had with, with folks directing frustration at me, I've still reached out to Mr. Broad and said, let's find another location. Because there's nothing in this, even with the amendments, that would prevent Habitat from locating in the city of Malden. There's nothing that would do that. But again, it's about the central business district and is it the right fit? You know, as Mr. Bentley talked about, the, the Class A industrial, that he has been just phenomenal in helping to, to sell and lease, that has been a tremendous financial asset to the city. Those are not abutting the central business district either. Why? Because even if there was room for them, they wouldn't fit there. They don't, they don't fit the character there. As we are continuing to build the downtown, the city center village, we need to have these in place and it has nothing to do with Habitat. It is about the, 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 the future of the city. And at the risk of making Mr. Deerhog's head explode, because I'm getting ready to use a word or use a phrase that he can't stand, overlay districts. Shooting daggers at me right now. But we have an antiquated zoning code. It fit great when we weren't growing. It fit great decades ago, but it's 2021 and as Mayor, as you have noted on more than one occasion, this is a council that has its foot on the gas when it comes to economic development, when it comes to the downtown project. And as we continue speeding down the road toward that destination, it's past time for us to look at a comprehensive zoning overhaul. What fits? What doesn't? Where does it fit instead of us having to go and, and piecemeal? But piecemeal until we can do a comprehensive overhaul is what we have as an option. So I want to support Ms. Kuzner's amendments.
Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mr. Mattney and, and quite honestly, I'm not at all against Habitat for Humanity coming to Malden. It's just the, right now, we are trying to protect the city center from proliferation of thrift stores. So that's where I stand on it.
Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One last comment and I apologize, I did not make better notes to which spokesperson referenced this, but it was one who represents the actual, the commercial property at Butler Square. And if y'all recall a few minutes ago, he said that they had reached out to over 100 retailers to try to free up or bring in someone to our city at that Old Balo location at Butler Square. You know what? That's a tremendous effort and they named, he listed some of the stores that I'm sure some of the residents that you all have talked to in the last several years have mentioned, why can't we get this box store? Quite frankly, with the effort that was put forward, we have Habitat who wants to come to Malden. No, it does not read a text amendment against Habitat. However, this text amendment would, would prohibit their store from going into the Old Balo where there's still a two-year lease remaining. I personally would welcome Habitat over having a vacant building, yet another large vacant box store within our city. And, you know, I have tremendous respect for Mr. Mattney. I am super excited about our central business district, about what we're doing. But folks, that's from, currently, from here back. For me, Butler Square, yes, it butts up to it, but not today. And I know we have a vision and we have to look forward, but I just personally cannot support, once again, an amendment that would prohibit the store from coming into the Old Balo at Butler Square. It's not on Main Street. It's not within the area that we're defining as our downtown center. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thought she was getting ready to say, I want to hear from Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Absolutely. That's what I was going to request, Mr. Mayor. What, what did you have to say on this matter?
Uh, well, it's, I honor Mr. Raines earlier, so the center seat's a little bit different. So I'll hold my comments to the last. And so we've had several round robin, so let me weigh in type thing. Part of the nice side of being in the center seat is you get to be invited to a lot of meetings with potential tenants, developers, brokers. And I, after meeting with those, I'd go back home and I'd pull out the vision plan. And, you know, I wasn't in favor of this vision plan six or seven years ago. I didn't understand why, especially with the 24 acres we had going on here kind of thing. I wanted to see some of the, what I, I grew up calling block and tackle stuff, the, I wanted to see where roads would be, where would power lines be, where would sewer lines be? Did we have them and all that? And gradually that got presented to me in a way that I could understand it. I came on board now wholeheartedly in supporting the city center and the vision there. I spend a significant amount of time with Mr. Mattney as well as Mr. Broad, along with some county councilmen and that, a couple of them that represent our city and one that lives in our city. And we talk about the vision. And the vision, to Mr. Bentley's comments earlier, the vision is to reinvent the city of Malden. And that's not going to happen overnight and that was going to take some, a lot of discussion to get us involved in that. But it's started. This city center village walkable downtown has started. Prior to that, we had another developer who was looking at it. But his goal was the city center small. Go back bigger picture. We're blessed, in fact, with 385, 276, West Butler Road. We have an industrial quarter. We have 100,000 square foot buildings, 300,000 square foot buildings and businesses are moving into them. They do not back up to residential areas. They don't need a 25-foot buffer because they don't sit on those roads. Yes, I've been here a long time, as Mr. Black alluded to, not as long as some of my esteemed neighbors, I won't call out by name. But I'll, let me quickly tell you what I saw in Malden, what I grew up in Malden. Sky City. What we called the Kmart Plaza, the Balo Plaza, the Ingalls Plaza, the Old Golden Strip type thing. Strip malls that were designed in the 70s and 80s. Those are now detriments to those brokers that, and developers who ride through our city and they see that. They see that as an old city not doing anything. Maverick Station right on the corner is now showing we are doing something. Consideration of a, a broker or a builder for our fire station, before we even get out of it, wants to do something. Our old Jenkins Street property, they want to do something. There's other people talking about doing something, not necessarily in the city center, but they want to do it a West Butler, South Main, North Main, but they want to see that we're serious about modernizing and bringing the city of Malden into a new city. Those are detriments when we drive around and ride around showing our properties because we have to ride by them. So I agree with Mr. Mattney, the development and the amendments, and we brought up text amendments overlays. Some of us have been here long enough to know four or five years ago. We get sidetracked on the busy part of our city and we, that goes to the back burner, then we get caught on it. So this is a text amendment, I believe, that brings us forward to allow us to redesign and show the potential of modernizing our city. Old strip malls like that with big parking lots up front are not the way people want to see things done. In no way, shape, or form are my comments to be against Habitat for Humanity. I just got a receipt in the mail the other day where I paid my membership again, being a member of Habitat for Humanity. I've participated in on build programs for those homes. So I do know what the project and what they do and it's phenomenal. The first thing I did when we reached out with our East Butler Road quarter, when we saw DOT's plans, it was going to displace some workforce housing units. The first thing I did was reach out to Habitat and Homes of Hope and I said, what can we do to potentially have things in the planning stage to allow these people that if DOT does that, to have a home? Do they want to move up from a mobile home to a home? Do they want to move up to an apartment or whatever? And the informal survey we did each and every, I'd say 80% of them said, we want the opportunity to move up, whether that's an apartment or not. Ultimate goal, we'd love to own a home. So we looked at some property around here type thing. But we can't build workforce housing in the city of Malden en masse because that feeds on the low-income portfolio that brokers and developers have seen about the city of Malden. And we've had to take six years to turn that around to say, no, we're an upper, upper-middle income community. We want to make it better. We want to forget, if we need workers for a courtyard or Jay Peters and some of the others, we're planning for that. We did Mercy Housing down here, the apartments on East Butler right near Mutt's. That's 45 units coming on stream soon that are building. If you go down and look, they're two and three story tall. We had, as you alluded to, Old Mill Road, the duplex is there. That's 16 units there. They were full as soon as they got finished and got occupant permits. I think that's the right term. And now behind South State Bank, another 72, 76 units going in. Guess where they're located? In the industrial area where if they had to, they can leave their apartment and walk to Brookfield Oaks, jobs in there. They can walk across the street to Brookfield and get jobs there. They could walk down to the courtyard in Jay Peters and get jobs there if that's what it takes. So that's where you put your affordable housing, where the mass of the jobs are going to be. Yes, there'll be some downtown and we'll look at doing that. So that said, I'm all about the vision now. And the vision says we've got to clean this up, start the process, and part of that is to put text amendments in place that begin to restrict things to the point we can get back to our vision and keep our vision moving and entice the brokers and developers. Yes, we are real, we are coming out and not just a crossroads community. I don't see anything proposed tonight in the form of amendment or a motion that I can vote against. So that's pretty clear where I'm coming from. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to recount and, and just, you know... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna recount and just, you know, we're hearing passionate comments, um, which I certainly appreciate from my colleagues up here. And the reality is, well, we're dealing with these growing things. And the time between what we want, where we are and what we want. I mean, I think that's what this amendment is trying to address. I appreciate the committee and Planning Commission and all those trying to try to get where we wanna go. But, um, again, just appreciate y'all's passion. And with that said, I'd like a roll, I'd like to request a roll call vote on this matter, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, one final comment, just to be sure you understand. There is a beautiful restor four miles from the city center on the great commercial mecca of Woodford. So, uh, if you haven't visited, I urge you to visit. It is a nice store. It does good business. Thank you. All right, that being said, uh, before us is the amendment, uh, to the motion to add back in section 1037, item one, to reinstate the 200 feet from any residential use. Add back item two, uh, multi-tenant shopping centers. The stores will be located within a multi-tenant shopping center. And third, to add a one-mile separation between thrift or consignment stores. That is the amendment to the motion. We'll vote on the amendment through a roll call vote. Uh, who are the comments? Mr. Mattney?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Craylon?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Oh.
Mr. Black?
Ooh.
Ms. Kuzner?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor? Ooh, first time I've been a tiebreaker. Uh, aye. Okay, so the amendment to the motion carries for three. So we are now back to the text amendment to the Malden zoning ordinance as amended. So that would clarify, so I stand corrected. So we would have to override the, uh, recommendation. And Mr. Dearholz is, can you clarify that the Planning Commission's recommendation forward was what?
Mr. Doug, one second before, if you could ask Mr. Doug in the microphone.
Oh, Mr. Doug?
Uh, is microphone on everybody here? Okay. Um, what has happened is the Planning Commission reported out the proposal, but deleted two items. And the motion proposed to put those back in. And I can't cite the code section, but I'm pretty sure that when the Planning Commission makes the recommendation and requires a supermajority of the vote of council, uh, Mr. Black seems to recall that as well. David, do you remember, um, in the code, if I'm correcting my memory? Because I don't have it before me right now.
Aaron, council, and Mr. Duggan. I spoke with Mr. Hughes, uh, Daniel Hughes, about this in advance just to make sure we had an understanding of what would happen in this type of scenario. His counsel was that what you're receiving tonight is a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. That does not preclude the city council from making amendments to the motions. But as long as the, the ultimate action is to approve the ordinance in some form, that goes along with the recommendation provided with the Planning Commission. And it was his advice that a supermajority vote was not needed. It would be needed if the city council was taking the action to deny or not to overturn any text amendment on this matter.
I have, as I've indicated, I haven't had a chance to see that, um, city code provision. So if Daniel, um, who is my law partner, by the way, actually checked that, and that's his opinion, I would defer to that since I'm going off of my memory of that provision. But I do have concerns about it. I'll check it myself.
Thank you. So we understand approved of the amendments to the, uh, text amendment to the, uh, the amendment stands. So we're now back to the original motion, uh, to approve the text amendment to the modeling zoning ordinance regarding thrift and consignment stores as amended. So we're open for discussion now.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. King?
Just one quick question, um, and this is probably from Mr. Duggan. So in this case, the amendment includes adding a one-mile separation, which was not presented originally. Does that come into play at all with a, with change in the text amendment? Correct.
Mr. Duggan, I don't wanna, Mr. Duggan, I don't wanna cut you off again, but could you please use the microphone? Thank you. The amendment includes an item that I understand was not voted on by the commission. It was not a part of, um, what was recommended by the Planning Commission. And so they haven't even considered it. So, you know, I have a concern about that in light of the fact that you're, you're making two changes, one of which is outside of the consideration of the Planning Commission. And so I not had an opportunity to research it. And because of my time that I spent dealing with Club Epic, Daniel handled this. And I don't know what he would say because he's talking about what was in the action taken by the Planning Commission and what's in this packet, which had nothing to do with the one-mile separation. So now you're interjecting something completely new that hadn't been added by the Planning Commission in a public hearing. So, you know, I have to tell you that I'm reticent about taking that action. Um, and if, in fact, adding back in the other two items because they were considered by Planning Commission, uh, Mr. Hughes has advised Mr. Dearhog that it could be done by a simple majority. Uh, then I would defer to that because he's had a chance to research this. But this motion has an aspect in it that we haven't considered because it wasn't before the Planning Commission. So, um, that worries me because the public has not had input opportunity at the Planning Commission level, which is the very purpose of having the matter go to the Planning Commission.
Where were you less, it wasn't the one-mile portion of the amendment being added in?
It would, in light of the fact that Daniel handled this and he researched that issue, and that was his advice to Mr. Dearhog. But that didn't involve extraneous matters, which he hadn't considered nor, I thought about it because there was no indication it was coming before this body. It's something new and different.
Would this council be able to accept a motion to amend the amendment striking the one-mile?
Oh, yes.
So, does this council are to?
That would be through a motion to reconsider, correct, Mr. Duggan? Mayor, having voted on the prevailing side, we reconsidered the previous vote.
There's a motion for reconsideration that requires a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kuzner, is there any discussion? What this actually does, guys, is get us back off of that amendment. Okay, so hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for reconsideration, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the reconsideration motion carries. We are now back to the amendment of adding back 1037 items one, two, and adding a one-mile separation.
Okay, so we were taking out the one-mile separation and adding back in?
It is still in there. I would have to have a motion to amend the amendment to strike the one-mile.
I will make a motion to amend the amendment to strike the one-mile from any other thrift store.
And motion to strike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend the amendment to strike the one-mile distance separation? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to amend the amendment, motion to strike the one-mile separation, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yet, okay, the motion carries seven zero. Now we are back to the amendment that would add 1037, section one of the 200 feet separation and to the multi-tenant shopping center. We would add those back. And based on advice from our city attorney too, who's not here, uh, this would only require a majority vote. Back to a roll call again, uh, Mr. Mattney?
Aye.
I guess I need to ask, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Mr. Mattney?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Craylon?
Aye.
Mr. Craylon with us?
Aye.
Aye, I think I heard that. Okay, uh, Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Black? Ms. Kuzner?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, so we're back to for three, the amendment carries. And we are now back to the motion as amended. Discussion on that. I think, all right, so we'll go back to a roll call, the motion to add the text amendment to the modeling zone ordinance regarding thrift and consignment stores as amended, adding back 1037 items one and two. All those in fact, well, a roll call. Mr. Mattney?
Aye.
Ms. King?
No.
Mr. Craylon?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Black? Ms. Kuzner?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, so the motion as amended carries for three. The next item on our agenda is the standing committee members is concerning, Ms. Miller?
Council direction is requested for updating the Malden Sports Center's corporate membership packages.
David, that's recreation, Mr. Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a recommendation that I think we've discussed it for numerous times. Uh, you, myself, and everybody on council, as well as the recreation staff. And this is a recommendation from the staff at the Recreation Department to update the corporate membership rates to the following. You have 30-plus members, you get a $350 annual membership fee. 15 members is $400 a year, or 10 members is $450 a year. This is, uh, something that's been kicked around and that some of them are not paying but like $5 to go on the whole thing. So this is a corporate, and, uh, the Recreation Director has a couple people that's willing to, in new developments, to buy a year's membership for their new residents, to pay the city for their membership for a one-year time as an enticement to build up the membership to the, uh, Sports Center and to, uh, sell their properties. So I make a motion that we adopt this, uh, new fee structure that is recommended by the staff.
A motion for Mr. Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds, is there any discussion?
My question is, after that first year that, um, the business is paying for these memberships, does it then go to what our residents are paying per month?
Mr. Kumland? Sir, uh, yes, ma'am. Um, to get that membership, what we want, want to try to do is the city get their money upfront. If, uh, there's a neighborhood that's starting, uh, actually came to us wanting to have that, uh, see if we had a corporate rate. We do have a corporate rate, but it didn't really, we hadn't changed it probably. Mayor, you can help me on this since '06, since the building was open. And so the answer to your question long and short, no, they would not be able to do that. You would have to have that, uh, amount of number to, to sign up for that price again. If you go back to next year, if that, pay for that full year, you have to pay for that same rate. Have that 30 or the 10 or the 15.
So my next question then is, and you said this was a subdivision?
It is a subdivision. The subdivision?
Even if it's a business, um, let's say the subdivision, let's go back to the subdivision. They're gonna do this every year? They're gonna pay every year? Or are they gonna expect the homeowners to pay?
Homeowners, homeowners would be responsible for that after the first year, after, uh, the housing development pays for it. That's just an incentive for them to buy a house. And so they are willing to do that. And after that, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
And they'll be at the same rate that they were getting through the homeowners?
Oh, ma'am, they would have to have the rate as 10, 15, and 30 to get that rate as it is now.
That just concerns me because our Malden citizens who join the Sports Center pay more than this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I no longer obviously serve on the Recreation Committee. However, this is an item that ever since I've been on council, we've been trying to, um, up the membership of our corporate members. So, uh, it's my understanding that it's kind of by default that the HOA came into play. This is something that I think Mr. Kumlander and his staff had already been looking at via the wishes of council of past in wanting to have some type of rate that would assist us with recruiting our local businesses and corporate-level businesses that are at our back doorsteps that we haven't done in the past. So, um, for that, thank you and your committee for presenting this to us tonight because it's a step we've been trying to take for six years that I know of. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, no, absolutely. Follow with Ms. King, appreciate all that you're doing here. The only other thing is I'm all about this more that I have concern with is your start date from a membership. In other words, let's say it's a development and those guys buy all of those on August 1, whatever that date is, is the start date of that membership gonna be August 1? Or is it going to be the move-in date of, you know, unit three doesn't move in until December the 1st? Do we have a way to track that? And then is that the way you intend to handle it?
Yes, I think we need to start it off at the date that they start moving in. And we just have to keep up as a staff to make sure that, you know, they, they won't get the same rate. It's a corporate rate, start over. That answer your question?
I believe so. So the start date of the memberships, I guess, is my real question, especially considering subdivision, that each individual house will come in, come online at different times.
Right, correct. I walked up there, yes, uh, excuse me, last, one day last week. They've already sold six or seven units already in that subdivision we're talking about, so. And so they're, they're moving in, so you're gonna still build building back there, but that housing, the people are buying that, it's, it's gonna give the city upfront money for that. So that's, that's money we didn't have, and so I don't turn down money. And so, but I, I do, I am mindful of the taxpayers of Malden. So that's, that's money we didn't have. And so I don't turn down money. And so, but I, I do, I am mindful of the taxpayers of Malden as well, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr.
Do I understand then that they would say a builder, and let's, let's give it simple, ten members. So they're going to basically give you forty-five-hundred dollars, and as the people buy the home and start their membership, it would start tracking. And that would be one until they get to ten. At the end of the, the first one that signed up first, a year from now, he goes to renew. He, she, using this as a direct term, uh, and as long as they were ten, then that development, they would continue renewing at the ten-plus membership annually.
Correct. And that would, that would be considered if you, let's say, uh, if you live in Plantation Green and ten members want to come up there together and, and do that, that would be considered, that's corporate. If you have eight now, that's six in our corporate package now, you have to have eight or more.
But I think the question is, if a year from now, I go to renew my membership and there's only seven of us left, when I go back to the current annual membership of the one member now and not get the ten-plus membership?
Correct.
Okay, so that would roll back. I think it was what I sensed from Ms. Kuzner. She was actually adding, asking, would, how would it roll back? They gotta keep the minimum number going every year, year, year to keep getting that special rate.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Excuse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know that, I know that the Sports Center has been trying to get new members for years. And, and I get that, and they really need them. But I go back to the fact that these corporate members, let's say they have thirty-plus, then you go to eleven dollars and sixty-six cents if you just have thirty per month for one person, where our residents are paying fifty-six. Is that correct? A month, yeah. I just, I just kind of have a problem with that. Um, I know what we're trying to do here, but I don't think it's fair to our residents, especially let's say it's a corporate business and, and it's around here. And the their employees don't live in Malden, but they enjoy coming to the Sports Center at lunch or whatever. And they get this really, really discounted rate versus what our residents pay. So that's the problem that I have.
I understand. And, uh, and I was, I'm dealt with a task to get folks in there, and I'm trying every way possible to, to get them in there. So you'll know, uh, a lot of people, we hadn't had a marketing person probably a year or so. A lot of people didn't even know what the Sports Center was. We've gotten so much response of people just, uh, since we've hired, uh, the, the membership person is, they didn't know what Malden Sports Center was. They thought it was just a gymnasium. So, um, you know, I'm just trying to, um, offset some of the costs that the taxpayers have to pay. Because it costs a lot to run that, uh, show down there. And, uh, so we are just trying to find an avenue, and it's up to council and the mayor, if that's what y'all want to do. I'll do whatever y'all would like me to do, so.
I think the thing, make sure we clarify, these are annual paid, uh, they're not monthly numbers. So the eleven sixty-six, you do in the math, I understand, and compare that to fifty-six dollars, but we're talking about getting the money upfront. And currently, there is an annual membership available for individuals, uh, family and all that. And it's not far off from that number. I, I don't know if you brought those numbers or not, but there is an annual.
I'll look it up. It is about the same, Mayor. Yes, sir.
We intentionally take that mic away from you.
Yeah. Okay. If you look at the wording here, this is referencing corporate membership. It says, "membership through their company." And a developer who's building a lot, uh, residents and selling it to an individual, they are not a employee of that corporation. And so if you're going to allow individual homeowners or a homeowners' association to pay for a membership, and if it's an HOA, it's a partnership or anything other than a corporation, you're not addressing that with the way this is described as corporate membership for members through their company, which is the way this is described. I just want to draw that to your attention. Get into the issue of what if ten friends decide to get together and buy one, and they don't work for the same company? So I just bring this to your attention because it may cons, require further consideration, and that's up to you all to craft this in a way. If it's designed as a corporate benefit for employees, that's one thing. But if it's individuals are going to be able to start getting together to do this, it's a different thing. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Let the record reflect that as much as it pains me, I have to agree with our city attorney, Mr. Dugan, the word corporate could be problematic.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, that's really what I've been sitting here trying to raise my hand for. If, if we're dealing with HOAs in these new subdivisions, uh, as developers are putting those HOAs together, they are, they're putting together legal entities that are under the covenant restrictions for that particular subdivision. I don't know that we have a lot of new subdivisions coming online that don't have HOAs. So if they're, if they're dealing with an HOA as a legal entity, I think that that would probably meet what we're talking about. You know, it, it would be different from ten friends just saying, hey, y'all want to go get memberships at the Sports Center? You know, unless they wanted to go through the steps that it took to form a legal corporate entity, uh, and, you know, go down to the Secretary of State's office and deal with all of that to get it filed. And I don't know that they necessarily would, but, you know, certainly that's a different situation than, than an HOA. But if we're talking about a legal corporate entity, it, that's, that's what it is.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think originally when you started this, the discussion was for a builder, let's make one up, uh, a career development corporation, they're building this subdivision. And they are going to come in and purchase thirty memberships, and they're going to pay you the thirty times whatever. And they're going to then give that to anybody that buys a house in that subdivision. It's paid for. They give it to a, that's an enticement from the buy house, so then it's a, that's done. That's over with the first year. The problem I get into is the second year, because then I've got to go back to Mr. Greer and say, your corporation needs to buy thirty more and pay me thirty times the annual rate for your homeowners. And if he's got thirty new homes, he's probably going to do it. But if he doesn't, that is the decision that got to be made. So from that standpoint, what, I guess this started out as where we tried years ago to go out, knock on the door of industries and get them to get their employees into the Sports Center, the special rate kind of thing. So, uh, this was a unique twist when it became a builder who requested it, which is still a corporation. But second year is where it gets a little more problematic, I would think, for an individual to have to come by. So I think the motion to accept this type of membership would need to leave the word corporate out of it. I don't know how you phrase it. Or is that something that the committee would like passed over again? Mr. Black.
Mayor, just to thought, this is corporate, and like you're saying, it is a corporation. So a builder, developer comes in, they fight, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, if this was stated upfront to that corporation, after the one year, then it will revert back to individual membership on the individual themselves, not through a corporation. That way, whenever this one year expires, that is paid for upfront, you have records in the computer and all, states when their expiration date is. Make sure it is explained to the corporation and the members when they come to showing that once the year is up, then it reverts back to the individual membership at that rate, whatever the, that rate is for that family or whatever, instead of corporate rate.
That's something we definitely put in their package. Uh, actually, the Sports Center is already on there. They did not have, tell us they were doing that. So, uh, you know, I just feel like that if we're going to sell that place and for it to run eventually, I, so we have got to have some kind of a rate system in place. We have not, uh, we have had one, but it's outdated. I, I've done my research, um, you know, uh, this place is unique. Uh, there's no other town really in the, in the state of South Carolina that's got a center like this, and it ran by a city. And so it's hard to compare it to the Y, and it's hard to compare it to, uh, Lifetime Fitness because it's privately owned. And so, we're just trying to sell the memberships, and we'll do the pleasure of the mayor and council, whatever y'all like to do. We're just trying to sell that place. That's why the bathrooms have been open, and the building's been open on beach and Fridays and the barbecue thing, and just trying to get people in there. That is a unique facility, and it's, uh, state-of-the-art still, built in oh-six. We got a lot to offer. We've got to give that person out there selling these memberships something to bite on when we go out and try to sell these memberships.
Structure right now, there is a break on the annual versus the monthly. And there used to be a five-dollar discount on the monthly. Is that still in the current membership?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But it's five dollars on the individual monthly, not on the annual. The annual is already discounted.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Kuzner.
I would just like to say I agree with Mr. Black. As long as, after that first year, it goes to an individual instead of being you know, because I, I can't imagine unless they're paying dues to the homeowners' association, that the homeowners' association is going to automatically pay money to, um, keep everyone in the Sports Center.
Don't know that this was defined to
That's just, that's just a marketing tool to sell, to sell those homes, is have that, uh, membership included in that first year. Uh, the the firm that's wanting to do that is wanting to go ahead and buy them. And so that's the reason kind of up in front of y'all today. So it's forty-seven or forty-nine units going on up there on Butler Road.
You're selling to a corporation, not to an HOA.
Right. We're not, it's not a HOA, so it's, uh, housing.
Not intended to be marketed to an HOA, as far as you know. Does anything this council needs to consider that wording in there? Or is it just okay with clear intent? You thinking?
No, yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, I, I just think that we need to be reminded here that we're voting on rates for corporate membership. And I think staff can then work out all of those details as to when that time expires, because I think we're getting into nitty-gritty stuff here. And, you know, you could have a corporation that had five hundred employees, and it's not going to be a big deal for them to have thirty-plus on an annual basis. And I trust that your staff and your membership coordinator can, and that fancy computer system, no pun intended, can track, can track these memberships so that that would not become a problem in the future. So again, the motion is to approve a corporate membership rate.
Thank you, King. Any other discussion? Ready for the vote. All right, the motion before us is to approve a corporate membership rate package as outlined. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Crayling.
Aye.
Got it. Seven, oh. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Black. Thanks, sir. Uh, next, Ms. Miller. Thank you, still there. Yep.
Council is requested to approve offender to outfit eighteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Ford police utility interceptor, interceptors, excuse me, which are Ford Explorers with police equipment. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Unique Lighting Solutions.
Ms. Miller, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, um, a little background. In our capital budget for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-two, um, council approved, um, the purchase of eighteen police vehicles over the next three years. And within that process, there's, um, cost associated with upfitting these police vehicles. Um, so as Ms. Miller stated, um, this was put out, um, in an RFP, and we received two bid proposals. Um, the financial impact is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which has already been, um, the funding source in our current twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So, um, at this time, I would make a motion to award the bid for upfitting the police vehicles to Unique Lighting Solutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
And quadruple. Ms. Miller, take your choice. I'm going to write down Reynolds, and I heard him, he's closest to mayor. That motion. Uh, is there any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor of the motion to award the bid for unique lighting solutions, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, like, sign. Hear none. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you, Ms. King.
Council is requested to approve a resolution for the city to enter into a memorandum of agreement for the provision of secure detention services with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice's Detention Center for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Ms. Miller, I believe that's public safety. Ms. King?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is an annual agreement that, um, we renew, um, annually. So is it getting late or what? Um, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the city of Malden to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice for the detention of juveniles.
Motion, Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor of the motion to approve a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement with South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice, say aye.
Aye.
There's opposed, like, sign. Hear none. The motion carries seven, zero.
Council is requested to approve a resolution to establish a policy providing that only the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and the city administrator with the express written authority of the council may execute contracts or other documents that obligate the city financially or otherwise, and prohibit department heads and all other city employees from executing such documents.
Over, Mr. Reynolds, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This just came up as an amendment to include language that clarifies who has the authority to sign contracts on behalf of the city. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached resolution with the one change, one of this came out of committee was with the, and the last item that was a policy will result in immediate violation of this policy will result in immediate termination. Uh, it was discussed at the committee to have that actually say may result in an immediate termination. With it, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached resolution for the purchasing policy amendment.
Motion for Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King. Any discussion?
Mayor. Mr. Matt. Thank you, Mayor. My, I understand the, the intent behind the, the policy, but I, I'm concerned that we may be tying department heads' hands. I, I, I'm concerned that, you know, this may be like the analogy of killing a fly with a sledgehammer. And we know that we had a situation occur where someone stepped out beyond their authority to make a, a purchase. to make a, a purchase. But I'm concerned that this may be going a little too far. And as our former mayor stood up and talked about earlier, you know, there, there's the potential for unintended consequences. And I don't want us to have those unintended consequences that, that we may need to, to go back and, and resolve. So I understand that this will probably pass tonight. I'm not going to be able to support it tonight and would just hope that, you know, I almost wish it was an ordinance because we would be able to take care of this in two readings and we could make amendments in, in a couple of weeks or, or in a month. But I know that it's a resolution, but I, I, I hope that we're not going to have to go back and, and revisit it. That, that's my concern is that we, we tie the hands of the folks who may need to move a little more nimbly than this process will allow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If counsel look on page 168 of this document, on paragraph one down under analysis by staff, only thing that I see on that says the mayor shall have the authority to execute contracts that obligate the city which are approved by the mayor and council. Should that just be council because the way it's read and the way I'm looking at it, if the mayor did not approve of it, then would not, you know, pass because the mayor didn't approve. We'd need to just strike out mayor and leave it as council because the mayor is a part of the council body.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember that came up in committee. Mr. Madden, you touched on that in the committee. What was the verdict on? Under we mentioned whether or not that would have an adverse effect on giving the mayor authority to not sign some, not execute a document if he disagreed with it.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds, members of the council. Um, it, discussion in committee, I was looking at this as a whole. So if the mayor is unavailable, then of course it would go to the mayor, pro tem, and then to the city administrator, execute the documents. Mayor and council is understood as the governing body. So as far as there being some confusion on if the mayor's not present for a vote or not, if the major, if the majority of the council votes for an item, then this, this policy will allow either for the mayor, the pro tem, or the city administrator to execute the agreement.
I may, I've, I heard the same thing. And then Mr. Reynolds brought this concern up also when I went back and read this several times. The intent, and that's the problem here, obligate the city which are approved by the mayor and council. In other words, there must be a majority approval of this council, which we see seven people. But if you look at our former governor, they says the council is delineated from mayor. And that's been part of, we've seen a lot of changes in the documentation. As I explain, people, the mayor has no power in the city of Malden. He's just one vote and he signs the things that this council on the majority approves. And I, I read and understand the wording to mean that it was approved by mayor and council in a majority vote and which obli, uh, which gave me the authority to sign the agreements or the contracts that obligate in the city. So I understand that. It, it's an interpretation intent and it, you know, my interpretation, your interpretation, your interpretation, where it gets into is I don't know if it's clear or not. Uh, I know we've heard it, especially in the last two years, referred to as the council and mayor, not just the councils. I don't have a problem either way. Whatever y'all want to do with it. I'll sign what y'all have me to sign.
Mr. Mayor, we have a legal here. Would you like to weigh in? Mr. Duggan? The question is for whether or not it gives leeway for the mayor to not execute the document that was duly voted on by a majority of council if he's so disapproved with it.
Mr. Reynolds, in my judgment, paragraph one expressly says, and the mayor alluded to this, approved by the mayor and the council. So it's the mayor and council acting by, that has a majority vote. And that was certainly my intention in author, author, in the authoring of this document. You, you could add a phrase at the end to that, by majority vote. For example, if you had concerns about the idea the mayor could act.
Rogue mayor?
Yeah, a rogue mayor could act without a vote by the mayor and council. But it, you know, and is a conjunctive word, which means both. So I think that addresses it, but you can clarify it further by just adding a phrase, by majority vote. And that's really up to you all as far as if you have concern with interpretation of it as is.
What I'm hearing is legal saying we've, we've, number one, approved by, and insert the words, by a majority vote of the mayor and council. Would that satisfy any concern?
And I would have to make that in the form of a, a motion for an amendment of this.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the previous resolution to say in between the words, approved by a majority of mayor and council. That, that satisfies me. Thank you.
Majority vote, which is by a majority.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to vote in there, a majority vote by the mayor and council or just a majority of mayor and council?
Yes, of mayor and council.
All right, we have an amendment to the motion by Mr. Reynolds to insert the word, on item one, approved by a majority vote of mayor and council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just for clarification purposes for our folks that are still hanging with us tonight, this is just to clarify our procurement policy that has been in place for some time. It's a practice that we have, have always taken. But it was brought to our attention that it was actually not writ, written in this format to make it clear that department has denied how the authority to sign contracts for the city. So this resolution is inserting that, um, to make that clear, that only at the level of the city administrator, the mayor and council, which we typically all, I mean, contracts come to us for our approval anyway. This is just inserting it into the procurement policy to make it clear and policy. All right, Mr. Duggan?
Ms. King. The issue here involves agency law. And who has agency authority to act on behalf of the city? And of course, our law is very stringent about the control of the purse strings of the city and obligating the city financially. And you all have that responsibility. And you have a very strict process to follow by state law with the annual approval of your budget and any amendments to it. And by custom, at least in the years I've represented the city, only the mayor or in his absence, the mayor pro tem or the city administrator are designated active agents for the city to bind the city. But that was by custom and it was not in writing. And in order to make it clear that other employees and department heads don't have that agency authority to act, can raise a question if an employee or a department head executes a document that you haven't authorized. And this is a concern. It's a control issue involving obligating the city and who can do that. And this precludes any employee from executing a document. Because we have in the past had circumstances where because the department head is dealing with a company that we may do business with, they assume that department head has that authority. And the department head may act on that. And you, you want to foreclose that door so that we know the only people that can have that agency authority. Because then if you get an employee that signs a contract that's been dealing with a company and then, you know, and you all don't know about it, then there's a, a control problem. This closes that door. And it clearly shows that nobody else other than these three designated people under the control of council can act on behalf of the city in a way to obligate the city. It closes that door.
I could just add, you made an excellent point, Mr. Duggan, which is probably what I should have said in the beginning. But again, this is what we have done, as Mr. Madden would say, by custom and our common practice. And this is just making it official and putting it into policy.
Do, do department heads still, under this, still have the ability for those small purchases of $5,000 and less? Because my understanding was that this was actually going to end up eliminating that as well.
The only thing that was brought to my attention was the response, the ability of the city administrator to act. And that is how I authored this. If you have designated a amount that department heads can obligate the city for, then we would have to add that into this for it to address that if you have designated they have that authority. But I was only told to add the city administrator because he has authority to act and bind the city up to $15,000. But it will be a simpler matter to add that if in fact that's the authority department's heads have.
If, if I may just add, the, the, the practice is just that if it's $5,000 or less, they don't, department directors don't have to get electronic purchase order. If it's more than $5,000, they have to get electronic purchase order. Have to review that. What this does is make, is make sure that it's clear, there's an agreement that has to be executed. City's legal council must review that agreement regardless of the amount to make sure the city isn't obligating itself in any way that's the opposite of what council has authorized in its budget. If it's under $5,000, a review of the agreement can occur. If it's obligating the city financially, council will need to, to approve that agreement. If it is, if it's, uh, or I can execute the agreement. As long as it's been approved by council, either through the budget, through some other, through some other method that goes through the council approval process. If it's more than $5,000, the agreement will go to the legal council to review. As long as council has authorized the expenditure of the funds, then I will execute the document. If it's over $15,000, that document will come to council. Council will have to approve that document and the mayor, mayor pro tem will have to execute it. If they are not available, then I will execute that document. So that, that's the intent of this resolution as it's been drafted. Mr. Duggan, feel free to add if I've missed anything.
The only thing I want to say is some of y'all have been here long enough to remember the credit card mess we got in. And so we tightened that up and added into this document. And the purpose of this is to do more of that to prevent people acting out to obligate the city. Now, if a department head is dealing with someone and it's a $5,000 or less expense and they take it to the administrator to get approval because he has authority up to 15,000, that's one thing. But if you're going to give the department head the authority to spend up to $5,000, then it needs to be added to this. So it depends on what you all are comfortable with and how much, how many people you want to have authority to bind the city to financial obligations. That's, that's up to you, but the more you have, the greater the potential for problems. So you'll find in most corporations and businesses that there are only certain people that are the higher corporate executives that have the authority to act and bind that corporation. You are a corporation. You're a, a special kind of corporation chartered by the state, but you are a corporation. So really the question's a matter of policy for you on how many people you want to have the authority to spend money of any amount. And you've decided you want to trust your city administrator have authority of 15,000. It's up to you all to decide if you want to open that up for department heads or not.
I guess where I get confused is the fact we have a purchase order system that says up to $5,000. So if I've got in my budget and I follow the purchase policy and it's going to be up to $5,000, let's say $4,999. But part of that purchase order that I'm cutting is signing an agreement that I will buy these guns from X number, ABC Lockstep or something like that. That may be an agreement. Is that going to be construed as a contract that's got to then run up the chain to you or before this council? I don't think this council wants to be signing ever contract for approved items in the budget.
Anything under $15,000, I have the authority to execute. If it's over $15,000, it hasn't been approved by council and it needs to come before this body be approved. That's just by policy. That's a current policy. So if it's under $15,000, then I can sign it without it coming to council. As long as it's been approved in the budget.
Really is not changing a purchasing.
No. This is just making it clear what the city is doing now.
But Mayor, I think one of the things, what Mr. Duggan is saying is that if we want to allow for the continued practice of those department heads to be able to do that with their, their current levels of spending, that that would need to be added in this resolution. And I think, you know, we've got department heads, I mean, we, we trust our department heads. You know, we've got a number of department heads that are here tonight. They all participated in the budget process and they know how much money they have to spend and they know what they have to spend it on. And there are things that come up that they may need to move quickly to take care of, where the administrator may not be around, where we're not going to be able to, to assemble in the, in the right amount of time. But as you pointed out, it goes to, you know, $4,999.99. They currently have the ability to, to, to spend that and we have trusted them to do that. And I think that if we trust them with the departments and we trust them with those budgets and to put those budgets together, that we need to amend this resolution to allow for that practice to continue. But as Mr. Duggan said, so that we, you know, that, that we're putting that use of procurement of goods and services less than $5,000 or up to $5,000 and put it in this resolution.
Um, as a financial person, as someone who's worked hard on this policy over the last several years, I respectfully disagree because we are stewards of taxpayer dollars and there has to be accountability. And with this policy that has been in place since 2007 with some amendments along the way, a department head can go to the city administrator, as Mr. Madden stated, up to $15,000. So there is a mechanism in place already to allow those purchases to take place. So I, I, I personally don't see why we would amend that. If it's something that we want to take up at the committee level, I think that would be appropriate. But I don't think it's something that we need to vote on and amend tonight.
Yes, that's where I'm confused as far as we have a purchasing policy, which as you stated, we're clear on. Just the word contract that gets into the fine tune. The, uh, hit the gnat with a sledgehammer kind of thing is what brought this about is we signed, a department head signed a contract for an amount over $20,000 and committed this city. We understood and department heads understood they shouldn't have done that. None of them have done it. This one went through, fell through the crack or whatever type of thing. So from that standpoint, so to me, the word, where do you use the word contract is the only thing I'm interested in. If it's a contract, it's you and it's us. But if it's just a, a PO or a large PO, then our person probably handles that. And that's for X number of guns or X number of fire hoses or X number of newspaper ads or whatever it's all about. I just don't want the department head to get hamstrung in such a way that he can't make his agreements and go ahead. Unless there's a word contract that you're the only exclusive person I'll buy fire hoses from and it's going, it could be over a period of time, a year, $50,000, then yeah, anytime the word contract pops up, I think. To me, that's what this was trying to do. But I do hear the, the concerns of, are we confusing a purchase order with the contract?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I want to thank Mrs. King. When she chaired finance and now is, is Mr. Reynolds is chairing finance, they have done, they've put in a tremendous amount of work and they've done a tremendous job. I do just want to point out that in section three of the resolution, it, it says, "The city administrator has the express written authority of council to spend up to $15,000." "The city administrator must obtain the express written authorization of the mayor and council for any expenditure in excess of $15,000 or before entering into any agreement which otherwise obligates the city." So we have the or that provides for the contract. We have the, the preceding section of that that provides for the expenditure of any funds at all. So that's where my concern with this is, is that there is not the mechanism that currently exists for department heads to do what they need to do to just go ahead and spend an amount up to $5,000 if need be. And I would just feel much better if we were able to include that as a section within the resolution.
I can fall back and regroup here a second. We're still in the discussion phase of the amendment to insert the word majority. Or did we ever vote on that? I don't remember doing.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Okay. So is there any more discussion on the amendment to insert the words a majority vote of? That was forwarded by Mr. Reynolds, seconded by Ms. King. Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so we now have an amendment to the motion, which was to approve a resolution to establish a policy providing that only the mayor, mayor pro temp and the city administrator with the express written authority of council may execute contracts or other documents that obligate the city financially or otherwise and prohibit department heads and all other city employees from executing such documents. As you stated, that was Mr. Reynolds. We are now back to that discussion. All right, hear none, all those in favor of the motion?
Mayor, would you restate that?
I'll do my best. All right. Motion to approve a resolution to establish a policy providing that only the mayor, the mayor pro temp and the city administrator with the express written authority of the council may execute contracts or other documents that obligate the city financially or otherwise and prohibit department heads and all other city employees from executing such documents as amended by the insertion of the words a majority vote of in section one of the approval by the, the mayor should have the authority to execute the contracts. And also to change the word in five from will to may.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer another amendment to insert a section after section three that would allow for department heads to spend up to $5,000 as per the current policy and renumber sections appropriately.
State that again.
Yes, sir. Would move that we insert a section after section three to allow department heads to spend up to $5,000 as is current practice and then renumber the following sections accordingly.
Read it back to you and see if I read it correctly. You are proposing an amendment to insert a section between three and four that would state allow department heads to spend up to $5,000 as currently defined in our purchasing policy.
The, the city's legal counsel would probably come up with more appropriate wording, but that is the sentiment and intent. Yes, Mayor.
Would that be as approved? $5,000 as budget.
I think that would be wholly appropriate.
That's what I was going to suggest, that we provide and we could add it to provision three to also provide that department heads shall have the authority to spend up to $4,999. Provided it has been authorized in the budget by the mayor and council. And that would take care, I believe, Mr. Madden, of your concern. He's added that in section three.
Yes, that would take care of it.
Show me to read again. You'll have a second.
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Kuznar. We are now open for discussions on the proposed amendment. Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's, it's simply what I've been saying for the duration of this discussion. We currently have the, the, the policy or common practice for, to trust our department heads who have been a part of the budget process, who understand their departments, to be able to spend up to $5,000. And I, I don't like the signal that it sends that, that we take away from that, especially if it comes into a situation where they may need to move quickly and, and in more quickly a fashion than we may sometimes be able to.
Mr. Madden. No discussion. Mrs. King.
All that I would like to add is, again, I think we're getting away from what this amendment is for. It's for contracts. And I think the policy covers appropriately the, the spending for department heads. Again, this is for contracts, not for general spending of up to $5,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was all I was actually going to say as well, this is strictly for contract. When the situation where the government negate, make sure that we don't have the city being obligated by department heads, even though they may or may not have known whether or not they should have been, there was an obligation made by a department head. And this is simply to make sure that doesn't happen again and that they are informed and aware of what consequences would be in, in the event of that happening. Strictly for contracts, Mr. Mayor.
All right, the motion to amend by Mr. Madden and second by Ms. Kuznar is to insert between three and four a section that says to allow our department heads up to $5,000 as budgeted and currently defined in our purchasing policy to spend.
The antenna is there, yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Closed?
Aye.
Did you hear that correctly? No, all right, four, three. Did I get that correct or do we need a roll call?
Roll call please, Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Madden.
Aye.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mr. Kuznar. Mr. Crayley.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
No.
Mr. Black.
No.
Ms. Kuznar.
Aye.
The mayor goes aye. So the amendment carries four, three. Now we're back to the original motion as amended and amended. Do I need to restate all of them or are y'all pretty good? Getting any late, might take the word thirty? Are y'all good? All right, all those in favor of the motion as amended and amended, say aye.
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 Your two noes, that makes five yeses. Five for two, the motion as amended carries. Thank you. Is everybody still with us? We are at H.
Council is requested to approve a transitioning to SEGRA from VC three for the provision of voice over internet protocol services for the city's phones.
I believe that's coming out of financing policy, that would be Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just like that, we have a contract report to approve transition to our phone system. Makes a lot of sense for the city because this will actually have about a $3,000 per, I'm sorry, I wrote down my number. This will be a monthly savings for the city to transfer from VC three to SEGRA. But I'd like to make a motion that we approve transitioning to SEGRA from VC three for voice over internet phone services.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Reynolds, a second from Mrs. King. Any discussion? Mr. Black.
Mr. Madden, does this include new desktops or are they going to reuse what we already have?
Mr. Black, members of council, this will provide new telephones. We already own the existing telephones, but they're with another provider.
They will be replaced with new instruments.
Correct.
What about the computer terminals that we already have, are they going to be compatible?
This is separate from that, but yes, there would, there, there will be no issues there, but separate from the computers.
Have tying them with voicemail and things.
Yeah, it'll be fine, that, that is, there will be no issues.
I didn't, I didn't see where it's going to be a cost or anything for the desktop, the voice terminal.
No, there, there will not be a cost, it's included in their, their monthly fee. Ultimately, over time, if we stay with SEGRA, the city will own those terminals. So there's not any additional fee for that.
They're actually paying for them in the lease agreement.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kuznar.
Mr. Madden, this is all inclusive. So this $1,341.73 includes everything except taxes and fees and surcharges.
It includes the service and the terminals, the telephones, so it, everything.
Okay, thank you.
Question I had written down here is, will we be getting new phones and a new voice over IP device provider for the amount of $1,341.73 per month?
Yes, it's on state contract.
That would provide the voicemail and everything we have functionality today, just a new instrument.
It's just a new provider.
Phone.
New phone.
Are you sure? All right.
Mr. Mayor, that's the savings from $4,232.85 per month from VC three. This should be the easiest item we have tonight.
Ms. Kuznar, disprove his theory.
So the little fine print at the bottom, I, I just, do we know how much taxes, regulatory fees, surcharges, including facility access charges, network access charges, administration fee, 911 fees, TAP and PAM fees, universal service charges, all these fees, do we know how much that's going to be?
Yes, Ms. Holly Abercrombie, the financier, if you could kind of elaborate on the quote, the amount per month that SEGRA provided during the meetings we had.
To answer your particular question, I would have to research that. I don't know that in, in detail on the difference in the fees. But I, just from where I am right now, the VC three number would already have those fees in it. And then on the 4232 already has those fees in that. I would have to go find out what, it'd probably be similar between the two. So, so let me find that out for you to get you a detailed answer. It's not going to be a huge, huge dollar value for that, whatever it may be. But that's to answer your question, I, I'll have to look at it and get my, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
I was so looking forward to a full blown explanation of what a regulatory fee and surcharges, facility access charge are. Darn. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to transition to SEGRA for voice over IP services upon the expiration of the VC three agreement? So SEGRA will be the city's deal IP, voice over IP provider, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jason said aye.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve the following. First, a resolution designating an authorized representative and contact person for the purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act 2021. Second, the recommended spending plan for the first tranche of the coronavirus recovery funds made available through the American Recovery Plan Act as detailed in Council memorandum nine one.
This is from finance. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items here, I can go ahead and make the motion to authorize the resolution designating the authorized representative for a contact purpose. Person for the purposes of the ARPA plan. If we could make that and get that out of the way, I would like also have Ms. Abercrombie come forward to do a quick PowerPoint representation of what we're talking about here with the ARPA plan spending. Certainly want to make sure that we get the opportunity to put out as many times as possible what our federal dial, federal tax dollars will be used for. And this would be another good, uh, chance to have the public view where we'll be spending these funds once received. The first item was a resolution designated an authorized agent. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
Hear none, all those in favor of the motion for, to approve the resolution designated an authorized representative contact person for the purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Got it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I failed to mention that representative authorized person was Mr. Madden, or city administrator.
Had a positive vote of seven, is there, those opposed, like sign? Hear none, the motion carries seven zero. Thank you, back to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at this time I'd like to ask Ms. Abercrombie to present her PowerPoint she worked hard on.
Mayor and council, I'll try to be brief as we are late. As you know, the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARPA, was voted in on, in March of 2021. There is, it's, it's meant to be a forward looking plan from that date. And the two dates that we need to keep in mind are December of 2024, where everything needs to be encumbered or, you know, contracts for, for the amount set and then everything has to be spent by December of 2026. The allotment that the city's looking at overall is a little over $12 million. It'll be broken down into two tranches. The first tranche will be a little over $6 million that we'll get probably in October once we finish all of our little stuff we have to do to, to be able to get it. We're close to that, by the way. And then the, the second tranche will come in the year after, so in October of 2022, we would get the second tranche. The, the government has given us basically four uses that they approve for using the funds. And those are to respond to public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits. There's also respond, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 and providing premium, premium pay to the eligible workers. There's a provision of the government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19. They supplied a, you know, a formula for us to use in, in, in figuring out those revenues and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. The city staff came together and worked on a plan of looking at the four uses and what, what the city would use the funds for. looking at the four uses and what, what the city would use the funds for. Um, and we came with those. Let me go back, ineligible uses. Um, just to hit those, um, you cannot offset revenue, um, if you had an intentional tax cut. Um, you can't make any, um, debt service payment pension funds, um, any of that type stuff. You can't use the money for that. And, um, you cover the cost of general infrastructure spending above the amount allocated under the revenue loss provision. You can't do that either. Um, and I've already mentioned the, the dates that, that are critical, three of 21 and December of 2024 obligated, and then December of 2026 to have it all spent. Um, so the city broke down theirs into the, we broke down a spending plan into the four plans. Number one was going back and getting some, some of the COVID pay that we had for employees that spent time doing work during COVID or the people were out because of it, that what have you. And then we, um, also had an out for, um, premium paid the essential workers during that time, which is a big emphasis, um, of the ARPA funds that they, they put in there. They really want premium pay for the people that did that. Um, and that total came up to $798,000 is where we are with the, with the first, first use. Um, the second use is, um, payroll and covered benefit expenses and premium pay, which is what I'm just talking about. Um, and those will be, yeah, the 700 and, is that right?
No, is that?
No, that total is not right. Sorry. Let me back up. I'll put it in the two, I'll put it in the two amounts. To recover the amounts that we paid out would be $399,000 and $146. Um, the premium pay for essential workers, which is yet to happen, but will, if you vote this through, um, would be $840,000 is what the city came up with for, for that part. And then we had the reduction in revenue, and I went back and calculated it several different ways, um, based on a couple of different models that came out before the final one that came from the government. And, and we came up with 1.782989 for that. And then there's the funding of infrastructure, um, broken down into sewer and stormwater, um, that we did. And those are going to be in two, two amounts. The sewer is going to be 1,375 total. That'll be between some sewer work and some, um, equipment needed. Um, and then the, the stormwater infrastructure would be a total of 1.129, um, for a total of 2.5 for, for those, for that function. And overall, you can see that, um, the 6 million will be broken down into the four areas with the majority of it coming in the, in the water and, um, well, no sewer, sorry, sewer and, um, stormwater for us. That's as brief as I could be. If you have any questions, I'd be glad.
Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. Um, so again, that gives the public another chance to take a look at how we'll be spending federal taxpayer dollars through the ARPA funding. The highlights were, as Ms. Abercrombie said, there was about $548,000 to, uh, improvements to ventilation systems, about $250,000 to assist in small businesses and households or populations disproportionately impacted. Payroll and cover benefits for about 1.2 million. Reduction in revenue, that's an algorithm that the, they put out that, that is, that's just algorithm they put out that we bunch numbers in and that's what it spits out. And, uh, the two other big items that are significant investments for the city, both long-term and short-term, are your working priority areas or the city's sewer infrastructure. Um, and the big one is a stormwater management project. It's not too often that you'll get um, an opportunity to take a $1.1 billion investment in your stormwater. And as we all know, that's been a topic within this city for quite some time. So this is the city's deliberate effort, uh, to curtail what we see and to address concerns that we have for the city, both long-term and short. With all that said, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the recommended spending plan for the first tranche of the coronavirus recovery funds made available through the American Recovery Plan Act as submitted in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Is there any discussion? Only thing I would like to add is, uh, thank you for all the hard work that Ms. Madden and especially Holly have gone through. Building with something as large as this with the federal government involved has to be very carefully vetted and looked at. With any allocation of money with the projects we got going, no one's going to be satisfied with everything. Looking at it from an overall standpoint, I am thrilled to see the word stormwater included in a significant amount of spending plan. I have a gentleman here that I looked at and smiled at because him and I have had many, many discussions and he spent a career dealing with stormwater in Rainbow County. So, uh, I'm thrilled to get that. Maybe I'll give up something else, but that's okay. Uh, overall, uh, I applaud all the work that Ms. Madden and his staff have done to get this before us. So with that being said, I'll shut up. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Madden?
Just a question, Mayor, do we want to get into, uh, a breakout of pay, uh, employee pay tonight?
Whatever the pleasure of council is.
Within this, it's limited to only the first responders, fire, police, um, public works as well. So this was only going to address, I believe, judicial as well. Is that correct, Mr. Madden?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Reynolds, members of council, so the, uh, the funding for premium pay, Mr. Madden, I think is what you're referencing. Uh, they'd be giving out and looking at two tiers. You have the, uh, first responders, police, fire, public works. Um, for those that make less than $65,000, uh, they will be able to receive up to $5,000. Uh, for those that are, uh, administrative or clerical employees, uh, they will be able to receive up to $2,500. And again, that, those, those folks that make less than $65,000 total.
But then we had, we had the other employees that were involved in that as well, correct?
Yes, that, that's, but it's not from ARPA funds. I, I want to make sure it's clear that ARPA funded does not address those.
Okay, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Mr. Madden, I think you're correct. It's completely appropriate to look at, uh, to call that out. So thank you for bringing that up.
Madden, any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the recommended spending plan for the first, what's that word? Tran, tran, trants of the coronavirus recovery funds made available through the ARPA as detailed in Council memorandum nine one. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, it says the follow-up, we have one year from the adoption, the receipt of the first funds to start looking at the second tranche.
That's correct.
Correct. So this will be an issue that we'll be looking back to how we can use federal funds to continue to improve our city.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is. Okay. FY 2022 initiative, Mr. Miller.
Council is requested to consider funding additional FY 2022 capital initiatives through the funding plan presented via council memorandum nine two.
Thank you. I believe this is also from Finance. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the FY 2022 capital initiatives uh, through the funding plan presented through the memorandum and what you have in your packet, Mr. Mayor. And I'd be happy to discuss a couple of those highlights during the discussion period.
Second.
Ms. Abercrombie would be happy as well to discuss them.
Yeah, I have a motion, Mr. Reynolds, and a second for Ms. King. We are now open for discussion. Are you would like to have a presentation first?
I don't think she was actually prepared for a presentation, so I'll go over it real quickly, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's a couple of large items that are included in this that, um, again, will be to long-term benefit to the city. The $780,000, the total is about $2.2 million. Um, the surplus funding can be used to fund capital expenditures. Um, so we're looking at city center streetscape project for roughly about $780,000. Um, some legal fees that we were looking to recoup, Mr. Mayor, as well as the other big one that I wanted to make sure we pointed out was we were adding an additional $1 million to our capital projects fund, which is certainly, um, wise as we move forward with so many of the projects we have. Um, as well as 2, 225,000 into an unassigned fund balance. Uh, the last item we had under there is premium pay for recreation department staff, community development staff and employees that earn over $65,000. So this is a way, Mr. Mayor, to equal the playing field with those employees who are still working during the coronavirus, um, to give them a premium pay advancement as well, just like the ARPA funds did.
Mr. Reynolds, Kusner, you had a question?
Well, my only question was, um, I keep hearing that we may go into a recession. And will any of us be affected by that?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in dealing with that, one of the things the city has done both very well in the past is put reserve funds in the bank for those kinds of rainy days. So in looking at items like this, um, our reserve fund currently is considered healthy and actually exceeds our, um, policy. So this is one way to make sure we're still using the surplus funds in a way that will have rainy day funds, but also address concerns and needs of the city presently. So all that to say, currently we have, uh, 42% of our policy, I believe, in reserve for rainy day funds already. I feel comfortable with moving forward and with the amount that we have. Holly's fetching forward, so I may be watching. I may be botching all kinds of stuff. Y'all, we could be in real trouble. I just messed all up.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add on. It's, um, with the three, uh, 225, I can't keep the number straight that we add back to the fund balance. I'm sorry, it's late and I can't keep my number straight. But 225 that we're going to add back, that would put us at 41%. And you know, our policy is 20, 25 to 35. So we'd be well over that with that amount we're adding back.
Right, thank you.
So let you know.
Thank you.
So we are in a responsible way addressing your concerns there.
And if I'm correct in what I'm reading here, this is actually a surplus from last fiscal year.
It's, Mr. Mayor.
So based on some unanticipated or some good revenue that came in, but also with the hard work of Mr. Madden, you and the department heads really watching their expenditures, we came with a significant, uh, surplus, uh, to be completely audited in October or whatever that time frame is. But this would be a, uh, the first 26 sets of eyes looked at it says, this is a pretty good number of the surplus we saw at the close of the end of this fiscal year 2021.
Yeah, I don't think it's important enough to state exactly what you just said, Mr. Mayor, is we were, we had a gratuitous revenue stream in a time that a lot of other cities didn't, but we also had, um, department heads and city administrators that did a fantastic job in what was a highly questionable period. And a lot of us were very concerned going into last year's budget, had no clue how to handle it exactly. Um, but due to top-down management of our city administrator, our finance director and our, each one of our department heads individually, this is the kind of success you see from great leadership from there. So certainly applaud each one of the department heads as well as the administrator and finance director. I think that's what you were saying.
I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Yeah, all those in favor of the motion for the approval of the uses of FY 2021 surplus as detailed in the above tables? And, and, um, Mr. Reynolds, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries.
Council is requested to approve the Carolina Piedmont Railroad reimbursement agreement for traffic safety improvements at the railroad crossing at the Jenkins Street and Miller Road intersection and the future railroad crossing for extending Jenkins Street to Hyde Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I believe this is coming, you can have it developed. Mr. Madden?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve the reimbursement agreement with Carolina Piedmont Railroad, uh, and the resolution regarding the reimbursement.
Mr. Madden, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Black. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to, uh, approval of the, uh, CPDR reimbursement agreement, traffic station improvements at the railroad crossing, Jenkins Street and Miller Road intersection, future railroad crossings, extended Miller Road to Hyde Circle. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to consider approving a reimbursement agreement with the Parker Group Development LLC to approve payment to the developer for improvements to be made to property owned by the city located at the corner of Butler Road and Main Street and to authorize the mayor to execute the reimbursement agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution for the reimbursement agreement with Parker Group. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, motion carries seven zero.
Council is requested to approve a resolution to add additional properties into the Center Point MCEP, which is a multi-county industrial park.
That's also coming from Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll move for approval.
Motion for approval is our second.
Second.
Here none, all those in favor of the motion to, uh, for approval of the resolution of the, uh, adding additional properties into the Center Point MCEP. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Good. Uh, and back to you, Ms. Miller.
Last item we have is to consider amending a lease agreement for the Gosnell cabin.
Mr. Madden?
Move for approval.
That for motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the amendment to the lease agreement for Pops, Cab and Creamery. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, carries. Is, uh, Mr. Heiss still awake? We are to the second public comment. Please come on up. Talk to us. Say your name and your address, please.
Trawling highest, uh, 104 Swinton Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. I live in the city limits of Malden. Uh, I'm only going to take about 30 minutes of your time. Uh, city of Malden has done a wonderful job maintaining their roads. I mean, by our projects that we've done over the years and, uh, how we rotate. And, uh, you can just see it, we're growing. You can just see it happen. But what is happening is the state is not doing their fair share. They're, uh, really hurting the city of Malden. We have a problem, uh, on our state roads within the city limits that are infinitesimally bad, man. I mean, we're really bad. Uh, Turner and Bannister, hey, South Dakota, South Carolina Department of Transportation is, uh, dragging their feet. They got $900 million in, in a, uh, fund in a, uh, plus surplus fund. And they're drawing interest on it and the interest of the $900 billion is going into the general fund. General fund is nothing but, uh, as we know in the state of South Carolina, it's just deep pockets for the politicians. the politicians. We have to do something in the city of Malden to get the state to do something about their roads in the city of Malden. Take Corn Road to, we take Corn Road up Miller, go up Miller, go to Jenkins, just, it's deteriorating before our eyes. I mean, there's no way that just, that road can maintain that traffic. I can't get out of my neighborhood at 5:00 at night. I mean, I live on Swinton, it comes out on Miller, you got a four-way stop there. I can't get out of my neighborhood. Oh, I can with some person that gives me the courtesy of making a left-hand turn or getting in the traffic. But the road is deteriorating on, as we look. You go in front of the, the mute place, and Malden glass and everything. I mean, this spring, it's not going to be there. Or if it's going to be there, it's going to be all broken. So I don't know how the fire department and the police department are making their calls. They have, these roads are, Ashmore Bridge Road, it's deteriorating. If something happens on Ashmore Bridge Road, and there's a catastrophe down where we're building, the golf course down there, well, my goodness, it's going to create a catastrophe. So all I can say is, please, go to the state, beg, borrow, steal, whatever we got to do. We got to do something for the city of Malden on the state roads. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. No one else has signed up to speak. Public comment. So next, we are to council concerns other than the late evening. Madden?
Not really a concern as much as just a thank you. We've been here for a long time tonight. We haven't agreed on everything that's come before us, come before us, but we had solid, respectful discussions, and we're still going to walk out of here as friends. And I think that in today's political environment, the example that we set here tonight is one that I'd love to see others be able to follow. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Madden? Just a quick word to echo what Mr. Madden says. And I've made this comment publicly in the news media, as well as some of the gentlemen that spoke to tonight. I am extremely pleased at the speed at which this council is moving forward. We don't always agree. But at the end of the day, when the door opens, we have said, okay, I can't get everything that I want or you want, but it's going for the good of the city. A lot of exciting things are going to happen in our city, already happen in our city. The projection Mr. Dierhoff put out that I saw the other day on houses coming online, if you haven't seen that about yourself of getting those numbers from him, we're exploding. Our population will be going on and on and on, which leads to Mr. Heiss's concerns about roadways. There are ongoing discussions on a regular basis, not only with our congressional district representatives, but also within South Carolina DOT on various projects, and how they dovetail with our city, and how we need to work together to move forward with that. So trust me, that is a priority. And I know that word "trust me" is coming from supposedly politician, which I don't claim to be. But there is progress being made, there are discussions being made. I hope they work together as well as this council, as well as the good of the city. Those are maybe not my concerns, just my appreciation for the long, hard work each and every one who's been forward for this. We're going places. Thank you. What I hear on German.
Is there anyone?
Whoops, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. King.
Saw it pop up.
Any public comment?
Ms. Dennis, if you unmute your computer, you can go ahead and speak.
Is that Ms. Holcomb? Okay, you have to unmute, whether it's us or her.
She's just saying, hey.
We'll get whatever comments Ms. Holcomb has to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Madden. All right, so we have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Reynolds. All right, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All, is there a second?
Second.
I'm getting, second, Ms. King. Any discussion here? None. All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.